Sister Zaha, I think we should start although there are like you know more registrations and we expect more people to join in but I think we should start. It's already seven minutes past ten, so I think we should start. Please go ahead.
Ya Allah, Bismillahir Rahmanir Rahim. Wa Salatu Wa Salam Alaa Nabiina Muhammad Wa Ala Aalihi Wa Sahba. Assalamu Alaikum Wa Rahmatullah Wa Barakatuh. It is indeed a great pleasure to welcome you to I F I's public hearing on the exposure draft of its governance standard Sharia decision-making process. We are holding this public hearing in collaboration with Bahrain Association of Banks and U A E Banks Federation. I'll take you through the agenda of the session. The first five minutes will be allocated for the welcoming remarks then our brother. Amin Mustafa Ansari, the Secretary General of I F I will start presenting the exposure draft. At eleven thirty, we will have the prayer break and then we will continue and conclude at two thirty P M Bahrain time. For my welcoming remarks, I will focus on two points. First, a brief history about the preparation of the standard. And the second point is the approach for managing the session. So this, for this exposure draft, we started the work in July two thousand and nineteen. And Alhamdulillah, we were able to issue the exposure draft in December two thousand and twenty-two. It is worth noting that the working group that approved this exposure draft held. Twelve working group meetings to review the exposure draft and this is the highest number for any of our issued governance standards. This working group consists of thirteen members from different parts of the world. For example, U A E, U S A, U K, Bahrain, Pakistan, Malaysia and Saudi Arabia. After the issuance of the exposure draft, we held the first public hearing in May, precisely or more specifically fourth of May. It was in English and the second public hearing was held in Arabic in twenty-ninth of August of this year. So this is the third public hearing and we will hold Insha Allah an additional public hearing next month and after the completion of the. Public consultation process, we will gather all the comments and present them to the relevant working group. And board for the final issuance by the end of the year. So this is about the first one. When it comes to the approach for managing the session. The purpose of this session is to learn from your experience, to know your feedback. And therefore, we welcome your comments on the Q and A tab and we will also allow for verbal comments. If after this session you still have additional comments, please feel free to share it, to share with us. On governance at I F I dot com, no later than ninth of November two thousand and twenty-three. This is it from my side. I would like now to invite our brother. Amin Mustafa Ansari to present the exposure draft and start discussion.
Thank you, Sister. Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Repishtra Hadi Sadri, Veyas Sirli Amri. Wahlu Laktatam Ilisani Afqahu Pauli. Ladies and gentlemen, very good morning, good afternoon or good evening depending on from where you are joining in, joining us. This standard that we are talking about today. Is one of the most complicated sort of standard and it addresses some of the. Some of the issues which are never addressed by a governance standard by O F I or mostly by, I would say, a lot of other governance standards setting bodies even not related to Sharia. But some of the aspects, you won't find them in a lot of governance standards. It has a lot of overlapping with the ethical, ethical conduct as well. It has considerations of overlapping from with the A U F I's Sharia standard twenty-nine on. So we avoided overlapping, we just built it beside that but the point is that this has aspects similar to one of the Sharia standards as well. It has, the first time we have inserted as A U F I, we have first time inserted appendix. Addressing Maqasid Sharia and how they are to be applied with. Apply, applied with specific consideration, specific regard to Islamic finance and particularly in the. In the, in the, in the matters of Sharia decision making, how you consider Maqasid. This is again one of like, you know, very important areas by maybe I would say that it's a standard in itself. That, that appendix that we are talking about. Similarly, the areas that we had touched upon with regard to. The psychological tendencies, et cetera, that is very complicated as well. I believe it's our second public hearing for this standard and I remember from the last public hearing that although we held a public hearing for. I think three and a half or four hours, this one is for four and a half hours with the break. It's still a standard being seventy-plus pages standard, we could not cover it and it's not only about. You know, having a long standard, it's about, you know, the topics and discussions being so, so much engaging. That we had a lot of comments and we had a lot of questions and addressing those comments and questions actually took that much time. That in the last public hearing, we were unable to actually address two of the appendices. Which are, you know, I would say, although there seem to be appendices but they are crux of the standard, one is on. On the Maqasid and second is on the, on the psychological tendencies as to how and in what manner they actually. Impact the decision-making at different Sharia making level, Sharia decision-making levels. And actually, almost hundred percent of those examples that we are talking about the way, where these psychological tendencies. Effect the decision-making process, almost hundred percent of them have come up through practical experience, through. Sharing by the working groups, through some of the interviews that were conducted during our ethical, our ethics code development. So everything, almost everything, I think hundred percent of the examples that are coming there are coming from the experiences of the. Development team, the experiences of the working group and the board and the experiences coming from interviews. So, to be honest, it is one of the most interesting topics. The whole standard, I, I can tell you, if you, if you read the standard from beginning till the end, you will feel it so much interesting, particularly the. The, the two appendices that I'm talking about. So but my point is that in the last mi- last public hearing. We were unable to cover the two appendices properly. So I think that at that time I mentioned. To all those who were present that day, that the second public hearing will try to emphasize more on the appendices and less on the standard. So today I'll be a bit quick. When we go through the body text of the standard, as it has already gone through a public, a public hearing. But again, for those of you who have joined us for the first time, if you have any question, any comment, please feel free for that. So I will, I'll. Try to roughly divide it like, you know, like, you know, one-third for each, that one, one-third time for the body text of the standard. Maybe a little bit more than one-third for the psychological tendencies related issues and a little bit less than one-third on. This, the Maqasid-related appendix. So let's see how it goes and before I take it forward, I would like to thank. Bahrain Association of Banks and Emirates Banking Association as they have been collaborating with us in, in conducting our public hearings. Particularly for the time zone which is relevant to the G C C and Middle East. And I can see that Alhamdulillah, we have one hundred and fourteen participants right now, the registrations were four hundred and fifty plus. So I always repeat this thing that standard setting is not that thing that can happen. Only in a boardroom sitting and like, you know, devising and drafting a standard, it is a quote by our ex. Governor, ex-governor's and ethics board chairman, Dr. Shritusand, which I repeat most of the time. That it, that, that it is very important that standard-setting process engages positively with the market stakeholders at large. Secondly, while going through the, the list quickly, I could find some very good, very senior names like very, very. Well-respected names of the industry. So, so in, I would like to say thanks to all of you. For taking time out to attend this public hearing and to provide your comments. And last but not the least, as Sister Zahra has already mentioned. That it is still possible that today we may not be able to take all the comments and all the, all the observations. So we will highly appreciate if we receive additional comments, et cetera, in writing as well. So without further delay on this part, I would like to prefer, to, well, prefer to go directly to the standard and start discussing. I will not go for too much of the brief on the background, maybe some of it I'll touch upon but I'll not go for too much detail on that side. Again, because of the same reason that last time we had, we had a lot of discussion on that. Some important aspects, I'll do as, I'll discuss as we go ahead. I hope that you all can see my screen. Now there is something good in Zoom that now it mentions that participants can see your screen. But still at times you need to, you need to ask people that if there is a technical place, but I hope you are able to see my screen. I, I, I'll not go through the preface and the introduction para. I'll, 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 I'll briefly take it, take the discussion on the, on the, on the objective and scope to cover these aspects. So let me take you directly to the objective and scope of the standard. And, and, and just focus on what is like, you know, what is the approach for that. Objective of this standard is to set out. Sisters, Sisters Zahra, is it a singular or plural? Just see in the heading, please, okay? Can, can you make a note of it? The objective of this standard is to set out a comprehensive framework for the Sharia decision-making process for the Islamic financial institutions and Islamic finance transactions. While complementing the A U F I Sharia standard twenty-nine stipulation and ethics of fatwa in the institutional framework. So what we are doing in this standard is that S S twenty-nine is already there where that applies on the, on the. On the Sharia boards with regard to, with regard to the main process of giving fatwa. However, there are additional areas that are, that are, that actually come to. Come to like, you know, support the whole decision-making process. So for example, one part is how management. Actually brings the information, et cetera, what is needed for this purpose. Secondly, when there is a decision-making process happening, what are the psychological tendencies that can affect our objective decision-making process? This is coming from the management and psychology lessons, but it equally applies on the Sharia board's functioning. The third is that some Sharia decisions are taken outside of the Sharia board, means that it's not a fatwa, fatwa will always come from the Sharia board. But there are Sharia decisions which may come out from, from authorities other than the Sharia board. So for example. I remember one of my Sharia, one of my, one of the CEOs of Islamic Bank and he said. Umar once Sharia board mentions that apples and oranges both are permissible, then Sharia board cannot tell me whether I sell apples and oranges. We were talking about preferred transactions and the controversial transactions. So the idea was about that if you have. If you have two types of transactions, one is a very pure sort of like, you know, Ijarah, Ijarah, Ijarah transaction. Ijarah mutaibitam lik transaction. The second one is a, a bit controversial tawaruk transaction. Now the question is. The Sharia board has given rules and fatwa for both of the products and providing the conditions for that. But now it appears to the, it, it comes to the decision-making of the management and the board. As to whether they want tawaruk or they want Ijarah because Sharia board is allowed both and Sharia board cannot say something which is halal, halal, halal is haram. Or, or vice versa. On the other hand, the decision with regard to which product to be applied. Or which product to be taken to the market at times lies with the management and the board and the strategy that is approved by the board. So I can recall and I always quote, may Allah bless, bless him, Sheikh Solik Kamil. We, we know that Sheikh Solik Kamil, although the Sharia board said that tawaruk can be permissible subject to these conditions. But Sheikh Solik Kamil in his times always preferred that tawaruk should be avoided as maximum as possible. Another example that I can quickly give it to you, that at times Sharia board says that in the event of necessity. You can, you can apply, go for conventional reinsurance rather than aritha kafal. Now, what is the definition of necessity? At times it's not very much defined. So at times, some of the boards of directors of the institutions. Takafal institutions, what they will do, they will just say, okay, there is a five point five percent difference or one percent difference in pricing, so let's go for conventional. This is something that has a Sharia decision-making aspect in the hand of people other than Sharia board. Similarly, there are situations with regard to the implementation of, of the, of the fatwa or the Sharia decisions. In addition, there are aspects which are not pure halal and haram considerations but are considerations related to Maqasid. Objectives of Sharia. So considering all these aspects, we have tried to cover in this standard. A lot of things which impact the overall Sharia decision-making process and which impact the overall Sharia compliance of the institution. From different levels. So it starts from the research and development and collecting of information. And presenting the information to the Sharia board for getting fatwa. To the level, to the Sharia decision-making process in the board itself. And then implementation of the decisions of the Sharia board and choosing the right options within multiple permissible options. Please feel free to put any questions that you have in the Q and A tab. If the time permits. And I'm afraid time may not permit that much, but still we'll try to give an opportunity to some of the people to actually speak up as they like. But, but for now, I would request all of you to put your questions. So on the objective, we are done, now coming to this core. This standard shall apply to all I F I's, other institutions and Islamic finance transactions with regard to their respective S D M process involving all governance organs, internal and external stakeholders. As well as central Sharia boards. There are a few factors related to central Sharia board, but I'll discuss them when we reach that point. Relationship with other standards. This standard shall be read, understood and applied in conjunction with other A U F I governance standards in general and with the A U F I Sharia standard twenty-nine stipulation and ethics of fatwa in the institutional framework. A U F I G S eight central Sharia board and A U F I Code of Ethics for Islamic Finance Professionals in particular. Definitions. Decision maker. Now this is an important point. I have touched upon this discussion but I think to understand this standard, it's very important that we understand. The, the, this definition, that what we, what we talk about decision, Sharia decision and what we talk about decision-maker. Is to be understood in this context of this standard. Decision maker in the specific context of this standard is the individual or body of individuals such as Sharia advisory board, Sharia supervisory board, central Sharia board, a board of directors. Interested with the responsibility as well as authority to apply his or their collective judgment and make a decision duly complying with Sharia principles and rules and considering Maqasid Sharia. In respect of, to any matter related to I F I's compliance with the relevant Sharia principles and rules. And just a housekeeping point for Sister Zahra and Alia, please make a note of it. Board of directors or those charged with governance, we, I think we need to see for the consistency purpose, just we'll see. How to put it, maybe we put those charged with governance here and board of directors in the footnote. The second point is with regard to I F I versus institution. Because, because we are aboard using the term institution in the newer standards, this is, this exposure draft was issued sometime back, so we need to handle this. So as well as the authority to apply this collective judgment and take a decision. Duly complying with Sharia principles and rules and considering Maqasid Sharia. Higher objective Sharia in respect to any matter related to I F I's compliance with the relevant Sharia principles and rules. So we are talking about number one, that Sharia board is the main authority but not the only authority to take some of the Sharia-related decisions. So for example, any of the ethical practices, any of the issues that is important from Maqasid perspective. Sharia board alone can never take that decision, you need to involve those charged with governance, that is the board of directors to take those decisions. So if we talk about that whether we want to use tawaruk or we want to use musharaka. Sharia board will tell you that tawaruk is permissible subject to following conditions and the necessity. But, and musharaka is permissible on these, these conditions. But it is the board of directors at times who has to take the right decision in this respect. So Sharia board alone cannot take a decision. So Sharia board cannot say, okay, you don't follow this one or this one, you, or you just give a quota of this product. No, if a quota of a product is to be there, it has to apply on a different, like, you know, by the board of directors. And again, at times, you know, that this is not only about getting a fatwa of permissibility of something, it's about your conscience, it's about your. Your, your, your thought process as to how you consider Islamic finance, the objectives of Islamic finance, the objectives of Sharia are these being met. So considering all these things, the decision maker can be, for sure, the main decision maker is Sharia board. But there can be additional Sharia, additional decision makers. I F I's are well-defined, I'm not going to repeat that, only thing to clarify every time because it's an understood definition. And it is already there in multiple A U F I standards, just to mention that a window of a conventional institution also becomes a I F I for this purpose. A very important definition, jurisprudential arbitrage. In the specific context of this standard is an effort to develop a transaction or product which is seemingly Sharia compliant while circumventing the generally applied Sharia principles and rules. Through, for example, unjustified use of options available under a different school of thought. Juristic, juristic stratagems, hillas, law of necessity, jura and or public interest maslah. Then again, further guidance is available in the Sharia standard on this part. I can see one comment in the Q and A tab. This is from Kahina Bavkia. Please, what do you mean exactly by Maqasid? Maqasid are objectives of Sharia, we'll go for their definition and explanation Insha Allah. Thank you very much for your question. Just allow me a little bit time to reach that point. Thank you again. Non-disciplinary fatwa is the opinion that is based on self-interest and not on proper evidence, does not follow the principle of fatwa and or accumulates weak opinions leading to an opinion not acceptable. By any school of thought in line with A U F I Sharia standard twenty-nine. Sorry. Sharia decision. In the specific context of standard includes any fatwa. So the primary Sharia decision is fatwa. Issued by S S B being the sole authority for issuing a fatwa. So if, when we talk about Sharia decision other than fatwa, we are not saying. That other authorities in the institution or outside the institution become a, become a decision, become a fatwa issuer. They, they can take a decision in respect of their responsibility, but they cannot issue a fatwa. Or other directive or resolution issued by the respective organs or governance in line with their respective responsibilities and authorities, with or without the input from the management in relation to an I F I's operations. Products and services, general activities or policies which have an implication or is related to compliance of I F I with Sharia principles and rules duly considering. Maqasid Sharia and respective Maqasid Alukur. So what we are saying that, okay, Maqasid Sharia, Maqasid Alukur, we will, we are going to define later. But we need to understand that we are saying that Sharia decision now is according to this standard is not only about halal and haram. It also has to consider the aspects of Maqasid Sharia and Maqasid Alukur. Brother Ahmed Abdullah has a, has a comment, Salaam alaikum. This is more like a comment than a question. There is one aspect of S D M process that does not, does get much attention, it's. May, may contribute to some inconsistencies with fatwas and Sharia pronouncements. Brother Ahmed Abdullah. Thank you very much. Okay, you added something. That is, there is no proper system of record for fatwa and Sharia resolutions. Or even the wording of the resolution is not properly recorded. Brother Ahmed, excellent point. Excellent point. I think we have put in a requirement here as well as in the, in the, in the exposure draft of, of Sharia governance framework. That fatwas are to be recorded properly, supported properly, the minimum content, minimum documentation, all these requirements are here and we have actually required. That if possible, this should be published as well. Brother Ahmed, your comment is good and I fully agree with your comment but I believe that when you go through the standard. And I'll take you through Insha Allah and I'll address that point again, that we have covered the aspect of recording. And we have given even a minimum contents of fatwa, we have given the recording requirement for fatwa. And even a publishing requirement for fatwa which is probably in this standard as well as in the Sharia decision-making standard as well. Thank you very much. No disagreement on your observation. My point is that probably we have tried to cover it in this standard. And I will request you when we reach there to raise your question again if you feel that any aspect is still missing. Thank you very much again. There is, there is, I think, a comment by Dr. Yusuf Shanar in the, in the chat box. Brother Yusuf Shanar, just by chance I saw it, so I request again and again, please put any comments on, in the. Q and A tab because I will not be able to see the chat box all the time, please. So and, and whatever is in the Q and A box, we keep a record of it as well. So may I request you to kindly put the question again in the Q and A tab so that it remains on record. So I'll, I'll, I'll address it later in due course. And thank you very much, brother Yusuf, for joining in. Now, S D M process in the specific context of this standard is an objective consultative process to obtain issue and implement a Sharia decision in respect of an I F I, other institution. Or Islamic finance transactions. Sharia principles and rules. We have a definition specific of Sharia principles and rules which comprises of the five items in hierarchy. That is the Uofi Sharia standard, country Sharia regulations, central Sharia board rulings. Uh, requirements of Uofi accounting standard that's related to Sharia and approvals and rulings even by SSB of the IFI. These are the minimum requirements, uh, the the hierarchy of the minimum requirements of Sharia principles and rules. And it is actually defined in other standards also by Uofi already, so we keep it to this. Now coming to the question from from our, I think, from Kahina Bafia. Uh, about the Muhassid. So here the Muhassid are defined well. Muhassid the Sharia that are higher objectives of Sharia Islamic law, which are meant to protect and safeguard human beings. Through obedience to Allah Almighty as the creator and in line with Sharia principles and rules achieved. Through the preservation of five items, Deen, Life, Intellect, Progeny and Wealth. And this is the, this is the priority as well, that Deen will be first, Life will be second, Intellect will be third, Progeny will be fourth and Wealth will be fifth. So these are the five, I five, you know, you know, elements that are to be preserved by these Muhassid. And the second part is that the prioritization of necessities followed by needs, followed by embellishments. And complimentary matters. So so this is the definition of Muhassid the Sharia. Uh, and it's a very good comprehensive definition. In the newer times, probably we don't find any good definition like this. Obviously, it has been earlier defined by scholars, but by Shatbi, by Ghazali etcetera. But now it is a more comprehensive definition coming from from Uofi governance and ethics board. Again, it's reviewed by the share committee. Now, another very important definition is Muhassid the Lukhur. And we said that Muhassid the Lukhur are equally to be considered for the purpose of. Uh, for the purpose of determination of a Sharia decision. So Muhassid the Lukhur are the objectives for which the relevant contract is legislated as per Sharia. Uh, Sister, just a housekeeping point, there should not be a full stop here because there is a semicolon in the end. Okay, Sister Zahra. Just a housekeeping point, please note noted. Explanation, the objective of the sale contract, this is the explanation or example. The objective of the sale contract is to transfer ownership of the subject matter of the sale to the buyer against a consideration. The objective of Ijarah contract is to transfer ownership of the use of act of the leased asset against a consideration and so on. If the sale contract, for example, implies retaining ownership of the subject of sale by the seller till the buyer sells settles the sale installments. Then this shall negate the objective of the con of the contract. Uh, Sister Zahra, just small again, housekeeping comment, sale installments, just check in the British versus American, US English. Because we need to make sure British English, I think it should be with double L, but you just need to check it. Secondly, explanation, the T should be capital.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just for consistency purposes. Okay, implies retaining, so so. So what, let's say, let's take the second example and then let me try to explain. Similarly, the contact of Ijarah implies the loss of the subject matter of the lease will be upon the lessy on the absolute basis. Then this shall be out of the objectives of the Ijarah contract. So what we are saying to say? Islamic finance replaces conventional contracts with Sharia compliant contracts. However, it is at times observed that a that a Sharia compliant contract at times is being, you know. Used only to show a Sharia compliance on paper only, not in the substance. So what happens that at times a contract, you know, does not fully. Uh, fully follow the objective of the contract. So for example, if the sale is there. Uh, let me give an example, there is a there is a Vakala Sukuk. A Vakala Sukuk, uh, in which the institution issuing the or originating the Ijarah, the 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 Vakala Sukuk. Transfers the assets to the Sukuk holders. Now, the question is, is it an absolute sale or not? If it is not an absolute sale, then probably Sharia compliance is not there. So it's not only the matter of like, you know, just seeing the the some of the main clauses or something. You need to see that whether the contract as a whole is being achieved or not. Now the examples that I'm giving to you about a Vakala contract, we have seen that there are Vakala Sukuk. But the come, but the originator does not remove the assets from its balance sheet. So the question is, was it a sale or was it not a sale? The objective of the contract that it is a sale and you need to have absolute sale and in case of absolute sale, the asset should go from your balance sheet. You cannot say, oh, I sold the assets to Sukuk holder, but I still own them. Sorry, this doesn't work. So this is something where we need to understand that the objectives of a hood have very, very much significance. With regard to determination of Sharia compliance and the Sharia decision making process should always consider. The Muhassid the Lukhur as well. So while it is always possible that a Sharia compliant contract can replace a conventional contract. In a way that the transaction can become like commercially feasible and all that and it may have some similarities. But in order to attain the similarity level with conventional, if the if if the original Muhassid of the contract are. Jubilarized, then it means that you are not fulfilling the requirements. And it may be a breach of Sharia decision making process. Now, I have a few comments, so let me quickly. Uh, quickly take it. Uh, Gulid Usman, Salam Ufi team, what is the difference between fatwa and resolution? Now, fatwa is a specific fatwa and it has to come in a specific form as per our standard. But the fatwa is a specific Sharia Sharia based decision. Uh, it is an opinion. If you if you ask me, it's a Sharia opinion, fatwa is a Sharia opinion. There can be resolutions, particularly in the Sharia decision making by process that are not given as a fatwa. But are given like as a decision or something. So there was a matter presented to the Sharia board and Sharia board resolved something on that. Now you can say though, okay, it's a form of fatwa or something, but it may not always be the same. And for the purpose of the standard, we have distinguished some of the situations. So fatwa is according to a very specific definition by Sharia standard twenty nine, which is followed in this standard as well. And there can be resolutions other than that. Secondly, there can be resolutions of decision making other than Sharia board. So for example, there is a bank and we hope there are more banks like this. That says that although Tawaruk is permissible subject to X, Y, Z conditions. But we don't want to do Tawaruk because it is less preferred mode and it has so much tendency of being non-compliant. Because the conditions related to Tawaruk are most of the time not compliant. I'm just giving you an example. So that can come into a resolution of the Board of Directors. This is just an example that in some situations, a Sharia decision may take form of a resolution. A basic opinion of the Sharia board when it comes, it is a fatwa for this purpose. One more thing to understand that you can have a fatwa from an outsider. Okay, you go to Mr. ABC or Sheikh ABC, who is not on your Sharia board and you get a fatwa from him. That fatwa will not meet the definition of fatwa as per Sharia standard twenty nine and standard number this. Because we are talking about fatwa in an institutional framework. And fatwa in the institutional framework is to be given by the authority who is for that fatwa. And that is the central Sharia board of the country and the Sharia supervisory board of the institution. We have comment from Abrima Kessi say, uh, giving the definition after after seems not help much of the student. This is my. Definition after sense not helping much of the student, this is my humble opinion. I'm not, I'm very sorry, I'm not clear about this after sense. This word is not clear. What I can understand from your comment is that that definitions. Uh, in the beginning are not helping, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm just keeping your comment open if you can clarify. Okay, giving definitions after seems not helping, seems, okay, but after what you're talking. Because it's still, I'm not very much clear that definitions after what. Because we will put the definitions in the beginning. Our definitions always are after the objective and scope clause. Before going to the standard, our definitions are there. Okay, Brother Fahim Hussain has a comment. I suggest using the term schools of Islamic jurisprudence instead of schools of thought. Uh, not a bad idea. We'll take this comment to the working group and to the board and we'll see if they are agreeing to that. Just one point, Brother Fahim, that at times within a school of Islamic jurisprudence, you can have two different views. So at times it will be happening that within 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 the within Hanafi or within Hambali. The view of the view of Imam Ahmed Ibn Hambal might be different from the views of Muthasirin. Uh, it is more happening in maybe Faqih Anfi. So this can also be there, that also they are within the same school of Islamic jurisprudence. Because the school of Islamic jurisprudence is more understood as as Muzhab. So we have, you know, Muhta Hidin Phil Muzhab, who actually within the Muzhab, they still do some Isteha and have different views. Uh, and as I mentioned that some views of Muthasirin might be different. So while I am taking, again, one thing to clarify to you and to everybody, that whenever we. Uh, whenever we take the comments from you, uh, and if I answer them. I try to answer them based on my understanding of what has been discussed by the board and the working group. It does not mean that we are insisting that we are not taking your comment. Each and every comment that comes is still taken to the working group and the board. And they can still respond to those comments and they can still agree to it. So I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that maybe using schools of thought might be more preferable considering that there can be one, more than one schools of thought within one Muzhab. Okay, but we'll take it to the Sharia, uh, to to the to the working group and the board and see how they see it. Uh, you have mentioned about the complimentary definition in which clause, brother, spelling, 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 in which clause, brother? Complementary. Where we have used the term complementary? Uh, I think Sisters Zahra, I think complementary will be will be with E as Brother Fahim has mentioned. We need to check it. Thank you very much. It is definition H. Muhassid the Sharia definition H.
Okay, Roach.
Okay, Brother Aldejani Ahmed has a comment. Muhassid is widely open in various opinion, differ a lot of them. Doctor Dejani, Aldejani first, thank you very much for joining in. Always when people, senior people like you join in, it is always encouraging for us. Now, the comment is that that Muhassid is widely open. The problem is, uh, how do I take your comment then? Shall we ignore Muhassid? I don't think that Muhassid are open in the view in to that extent. That 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 you cannot just consider them, you just ignore them. So for me, Muhassid cannot be ignored. Uh, if you talk about this thing, then I would say that even the Sharia opinions and the Sharia views of Mazaheb and even within Mazaheb are are open and varied. So what does it mean? Shall we completely leave the door open? My and my approach would be other way around, that while different Mazaheb can have different views about one item. But when you talk about global Islamic finance industry, you need to bring harmony. Because if I'm Hanafi and and I I move to Bahrain, where most Ulama are Hambali. And the and the maybe the original population from here for here as well as the royal family, they are Maliki. So I need to have a. Have a system of Islamic finance which is acceptable for all of us. In Bahrain, you will find Shaafais, you will find Hambalis, you will find Hanafis, you will find Ahli Hadis and Salafis. And you will find, uh, you know, you will find our brothers from other schools of thought. Even you will find Asna Sharis, Jafaris, and you will find like, you know, all of the Mazaheb you will find here. The question is, do you want to keep it open or you want to bring it close? So when we develop our Sharia standards, we try to bring it close. We consider all the Mazaheb and we bring it close. And we try to find something on which almost all of them actually or majority of them actually have a consensus. And in some situations, we go take view of one of the Muzhab because that is important in the current scenario. That is important in the specific business of banking, finance and the couple. Now, considering these situations, we still need to bring harmony. So same same approach in our Hambal view applies to Muhassid also. That Muhassid cannot be completely ignored, but yes, we agree that they are open, they have variation. But if you agree on the core principles of Muhassid, then you can try to find some solutions. So while I highly appreciate your comments, sir, and I agree that yes, they are widely open and varied. I think that the purpose of the standard setting is to bring bring them down to the most common. And consensus based Muhassad. This is our approach and I believe that that is something that the industry needs to take forward. Thank you very much for an excellent comment, sir. Guyong Gulichya has a comment. What, again, I apologize if I if I mispronounce some names. Because you know, people from around the globe join this session. We have one hundred and forty five participants right now, probably from not less than forty, forty five countries. And nationalities. So at times, you know, we are not familiar with all the names and their pronunciation. So my apologies if I pronounce somebody, somebody, somebody like, you know, somebody's name improperly improperly. And also wherever I have a doubt with regard to whether this is a miss miss or mister. Because that is not very clear at times from the from some of the names. So actually I keep quiet on that. So and if I do a mistake on that part, I I my apologies in advance. So the comment from Guyu Gulicha is, what is the minimum requirement should be met for Sharia board individuals, the school of thought organizations to issue a fatwa? Uh, the quick answer is that we have, we have exposure draft of. Regul of, we have a standard in place on appointment, composition and report of Sharia board. That is our governance standard number one currently. We are revising that the issue, we have issued a exposure draft of Sharia governance framework. That include both of them actually provide the minimum characteristics of of the person or the fit and proper criteria for the person. Who should be there there in the Sharia board. It's a principle based criteria which may differ from country to country. But the proper principle based criteria is defined. So defining that criteria is not a subject of this standard. Uh, so we have not defined it here, but we have defined it at the other place. Thank you very much for an excellent comment. Okay, now I'm very clear about this comment that Abrima Kessi say has a comment giving the definitions. After the lecture seems to be like, you know, not helping that much to the student. So actually, we are giving the definitions before the lecture technically. We are giving it like before the public hearing. So a standard starts with that, so I believe that it's done. Thank you very much again. Uh, Brother Aldejani Ahmed has mentioned an example of Tawaruk, the position of the commodity about my example of Sukuk. Thank you very much, Brother Aldejani. It's excellent comment, I believe. And some of these examples we have covered in the examples that we are going to discuss later today, Insha Allah. Okay, there is an anonymous attendee and all the time I request anybody who has joined it without mentioning a name. That if you can kindly mention your name, all of you can rename yourself. So this is, uh, this is good actually that you can rename yourself in Zoom. So that we know who is providing the comment. The scope of Sharia committees to provide Sharia ruling regarding the products and services provided by the IFI. Then the ruling of Sharia committee considered as fatwas and resolutions which are binding on the IFI, the quick answer is yes. The quick answer is yes, but our point is that at times Sharia decision goes beyond that. You know, even, okay, let me give you an example. Uh, there there was a risk management session. I was doing a risk management training. And I asked all the audience, I said, who is responsible for risk management in your view? In the organization. Somebody said that it is the risk management department. Somebody said, no, it is the Board of Directors. Somebody said it's the CEO. My answer was that each and every individual in the organization has to play its role in in the risk management. I gave example, I said the office boy should also be aware that he has to switch off all the air conditioners. And the electric but electricity buttons before moving out. He should also be aware to keep a keep a keep fire extinguisher in the in the. He need to know how to use a fire extinguisher and he should be. and he should be ensuring that fire extinguisher is always available in the kitchen or pantry etc. Uh, and, uh, a person who is just cleaning the desks should keep an eye on, 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 on ensuring the confidentiality. So he should be knowing that nothing of a confidential nature is kept open on the desks. And if it is happening, he should inform the respective person to put it in proper place. So the same thing applies to Sharia decision making. You know, actually, every individual who is involved in the transactions, at one point of time, he will find some questions related to Sharia decision making in his mind. He, because even the implementation process of a Sharia compliant transaction at all stages need people to take the right decisions at the right time. So there is a junior employee, just a customer representative, and he comes to know that in a normal Baraba transaction, the goods were, 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 uh, the customer informed to have possession of the goods later and actually the goods have already been consumed by the customer. Just one example, Sharia board doesn't know it, the board of directors doesn't know it, nobody knows it. The person who is sitting at the customer, at the customer representation level, dealing with the customer on a day-to-day basis is the only one who knows that the customer used the goods first and after reminders he submitted a possession document that, okay, this, uh, this goods are in my position, now sell them to me. Oh, sorry, these are already used. How you can sell something which is already used? The question of Sharia decision making at times comes at all levels because Sharia decision making is important in the implementation stage as well. At times, there are things which can, which are to be subject to a decision by, by every individual who is involved with the process. The main decisions related to strategy will be taken by the board. The main halal and haram considerations will be decided by the Sharia board. But how to implement them and how to take it forward starts from the top management goes to the junior level staff. Not only this, Sharia board needs good information, appropriate information to take a decision. I am the Sharia, I am the, I am the product development department person or I am the Sharia compliance department person and I do not submit appropriate information to the, to the Sharia board. What will happen? Or I place my question in a way that I want, I get the answer that I want from the Sharia board rather than actually putting an objective information in front of them. All these situations impact of these, uh, these like no situations. Brother Fahim Hussain has mentioned under four S. Yes, sir, I had already noted it. Thank you very much. Dr. Muhammad Usman, is it possible to make Islamic finance as acceptable as conventional finance when we have different school of thought? I think Dr. Usman, this question is not related to today and I'm really sorry uh, that today, like now I'm really sorry that today I will not be able to take any question outside of ambit. I'll just answer yes. Other than that, arguments with regard to that, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll not be able to take them today. But we can talk offline on that sometime as well, Insha Allah. Brother Muhammad Alissa has a point. I think the correct spelling is complementary with E. I think it's correct. Uh, Aldejani Ahmed, thanks for the reply. Yes, it should be considered. Your comment on Maqasid is acceptable. Thank you very much sir, again for your comment. Uh, in my opinion, brother, anonymous attendee is brother Azim Abdullah. Now you have mentioned it in your comment brother Azim, but what happens that if you don't rename yourself, there might be more than one anonymous attendee. So next time, I will consider again that, okay, it might be brother Azim Abdullah, but while it might be a sister. So, so I think Zoom allows you to rename yourself. You just need to click on the, click on the three buttons on your, like, you know, on your, on your screen and that, that, that opens up the option, the three dot button and that opens up the options and then you get the option of renaming yourself. Now, in my opinion, in Maqasidul Sharia, there are some other dimensions which should also be included in the definition. These dimensions are also unanimously accepted. Avoiding harm, removal of hardship, maintaining justice, public well-being, sustaining form and substance. Uh, I think brother Azim, uh, it's a good point. I, I agree with, with these. I think some of the learned scholars of today's times, uh, including, including, I think Dr. Jatul Asadi, he also considered some of these. Uh, my, my point is that we are developing a standard. Standard means that we need to bring a definition on which most of the people agree. You got my point? So standard, so the definition that we are taking mainly is coming from Shatibi and Ghazali also. So historically, uh, historically, the, the scholars have accepted their definition. While I agree that these four points, that you have five points that you are adding are important, but it may be a way of putting that if you, if you sit with me, I can agree with you that, okay, each one of them is to be covered within the five existing as well. So for example, when we talk about avoiding harm, the avoiding harm may be applied to, to the life and avoiding harm may be applied to the progeny. Avoiding harm may be applied, applied to, for, even for wealth. So the point is that it might already be covered. Removal of hardship again applies in different forms. So this may be done in different ways. Maintaining justice, public well-being, sustainable for sustaining form and substance, all these things, we can say that these can be covered. Maintaining for sustaining form and substance, brother, brother Azim, while we, I personally hundred percent agree with you as a point, but I believe that we covered it through Maqasidul Akul rather than covering them in the, uh, Maqasidul Sharia. We said that equally, Maqasidul Akul are equally important, which means that we are saying that form and substance has to be complied with. So it is part of the Sharia decision making definition. Now, in a nutshell, when I mention these comments, I am not rejecting your comment. I personally agree with your very valuable comments. I am submitting only two things. Number one, standard setting needs that you need to have consensus of majority to agree that, okay, these are the things which are standard. The point is that if there are five main areas which have been considered by scholars historically, those five can be considered as a standard and we can bring our standard based on that. The, 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 the additional points that you are mentioning, as of now, we don't have a consensus on them. Why? These are all important points and there can be an argument by people like me that some of these may be relevant to one or two of the points which are already there. So from that perspective, I, 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 while I don't disagree with you, uh, I, I still insist that it is better to keep them up to a definition which is historically and currently, uh, accepted on a consensus basis or a deemed consensus basis. So thank you very much for the excellent comment. Again, we will take this point to the board and the working group and we will see how it can be, uh, how it can be further addressed. One more thing that we can request you particularly, uh, based on your comments, I can see that it is a topic of your interest. I would suggest that if you see the examples that we have mentioned as to how these are to be, because all Maqasid we cannot cover, which are not related to Islamic finance in general are not covered. We have covered the Maqasid which are impacting the Islamic finance transactions and functions and the approach and the strategy. So from that perspective, if you feel that any of the points that you feel here are to be covered, you need to do. One more thing I would like to mention that maintaining justice, actually it is one of the subjects actually of our, uh, our board that we develop ethics standards also. And our code of ethics, actually it works on the whole dimension of Adil and Ahsan situation. Where we said that the minimum conduct for an individual in Islamic finance, which applies obviously to the institutions as well, is maintaining justice, Adil. And, and the second part of it is going to Ahsan level that mandatory conduct is Adil and the optional and preferred conduct is Ahsan, that you go even beyond the Adil and go for that. So I would submit, submit that sustaining form and substance is covered in Maqasidul Akul. We have not added it to Maqasid, but we have added it in Maqasidul Sharia, but we have added in Maqasidul Akul. Second is maintaining justice, uh, is a subject for us for the ethics standard and we have a very, very nice ethics, code of ethics on that. I, I, I think that you can have it. Third thing is that now we are working on a standard on a sustainable finance as well. We, we already have a very good standard on corporate social responsibility, but now we are improving that standard. It will be superseded by even better and much improved standard on sustainable finance or responsible finance. Public well-being will be very well addressed there and one of the aspects is that we are aligning, uh, that with the Maqasid also. So in that standard, actually, one of the aspects is that we are aligning it with Maqasid. So I think this is again one of the important aspects, but you cannot put everything in one standard. In, uh, last but not the least, your comment is well noted. The point will still go to the board and working group and they will see if they want to insist on the consistent definition or you want to, they want to add comments by you and by other contemporary scholars who have covered the additional aspects. Thank you very much sir. Comment by brother Muhammad Wali, by aligning Maqasid to influence his DM should lead to another tendency called Maqasid tendency which may lead to deficient as PM. This is not a, is this not a concern too? How is it being catered in this standard? Uh, brother Muhammad Wali, your comment has, uh, one aspect that I can understand well. And that content, that is that some people at, at times try to jeopardize, jeopardize the Sharia decisions by Maqasid. So I can give you an example. One of the scholars who has worked well on, on Maqasid, he has come up with some of the, like, you know, some of the, uh, some of the views which are not as per the original Sharia view. So I can, I, I can tell you that in the current Western world, uh, just an example, I'm mentioning an example. In the current Western world, uh, the number of conversion of women is more than men. This is a known, known, known thing, but it has created a big issue. That issue is that, uh, that a Muslim man can keep Ahli Kitab women in, in, in his Nika. But it cannot happen other way around as per, as per the original understanding of Sharia. Now, some people are saying that because of the greater objectives and Maqasid, you should be allowing the woman to continue the Nika. If the woman gets converted to Islam and the man is, the husband is, 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 is Kitabi. So I'm just giving you an example. I have read this thing myself. So one aspect of Maqasid tendency that I can understand is that is that at times some people talk more about Maqasid than jeopardize the original Sharia. Uh, we amended the definition which is commonly used. Uh, our Sharia committee had a concern on that. So we amended the definition in a very important way. So let me read the definition again. Maqasidul Sharia are the higher objectives of Sharia which are meant to protect and safeguard human beings through obedience to Allah Almighty as the creator and in line with Sharia principles and rules. So our first two caveats are obedience of Allah and Sharia principles and rules are first. So even the Maqasid are to be read and interpreted in line with Sharia principles and rules. You cannot say that Maqasid can override Sharia principles and rules. So brother Muhammad Wali, if your issue of, if your issue of what you called as Maqasid tendency was that at times some scholars or some people prefer Maqasid over the original teachings of Islam uh, and they, because it, it, it becomes an open, open-ended, then it becomes an open-ended like, you know, thing that, okay, I can, I can bypass a clear requirement of Sharia because of a Maqsa. So we put this very important caveat here through obedience to Allah Almighty as the creator and in line with Sharia principles and rules. So our definition of Maqasid is that you cannot bypass Sharia because of Maqasid. I hope brother, it resolves your question, but I think your comment is a very important comment. And as I mentioned here, it is a very important thing. Sister Zahra, please just make a note of it. We need to have a basis of conclusion on this in line with Sharia principles and rules in the Maqasidul Sharia definition because it was done on a very conscious purpose by the Sharia committee. I, I think we might already have a basis of conclusion on that, but if it is not there, then we need to just make sure it is there. Uh, we may consider the comment of brother Muhammad Wali for this purpose as well. Brother Muhammad Wali, I would, I would further appreciate if you can add some examples uh, and if you agree with my interpretation of what you said as Maqasid tendency and the way we address it or you don't agree, but I believe your comment is an excellent comment. We want to address it. We don't want to leave a, leave a door open here. So from that perspective, if my answer is not sufficient, if you want us to cover something, if you want to give some examples, please feel free to do it today or to send us in writing. But thank you very much for a very, very, uh, important comment. And from our perspective, by putting this definition, we are very clear that we do not allow Maqasid to bypass Sharia principles and rules. Rather, we say that Maqasid have to follow Sharia principles and rules. Thank you very much again. We have comment from Guyogulicha. Thanks for the answer. I would Insha Allah reach, re, re, search for it in Neufi standards. Mr. Guyo, thank you for pronouncing correctly, brother. My pleasure and thank you very much for being with us, brother Guyo. It's a great, you know, honor to have you all here today. Now, we have a comment from brother Abdul Hadi Hussain. During, during Sharia audit, some auditors expect to have Sharia justification in all approvals provided by Sharia committee. For example, do we need detailed Sharia justification of a Sharia approval provided for a marketing material? My opinion is that we are not required to provide that much justification for each and every issue submitted. It always depends on the type of the issue. Brother Abdul Hadi Hussain, I think again, a very important issue that you have raised. Can you allow me to reach to the Sharia decision, like, you know, the contents of fatwa in that part? Uh, one part, let me clarify. The scope of Sharia audit as per Yufi includes the financial transactions, uh, in financial arrangements, transactions and, and, and balances. The point is that we have kept the marketing, HR and other things out of the main ambit of Sharia audit because of the same reason. But whenever you approve something, it becomes part of the Sharia rules and principles because the decision of the Sharia committee or the Sharia board of the institution, they are all part of Sharia principles and rules. So if you have approved the, the marketing material, then it comes to that. Now about the justification, uh, our Sharia, our, our, our Sharia decision process requires justification and rationale to be documented. We have a content of fatwa requirement in which you need to document the rationale. The reason is not only to justify the auditors, you are not there to justify the auditors. I'm clear. Sharia board is the decision maker with regard to Sharia matters. They are not there to justify the auditors. But as a good practice, they must have the rationale and justification documented. And this is the, this is the, this is the ethics of fatwa, that when a fatwa is given, the rationale for that is, is noted and documented. So from that perspective, we have covered the aspect of giving rationale in the documentation. But we have not made the Sharia board answerable to Sharia auditors. Let me be very clear. But if a fatwa is not available, management is doing something. Only then the Sharia board, a Sharia board can be approached by the auditors through the management to give a specific approval or something. But your approval is enough, your justification is not needed. Why? Because according to the governance framework, the decision-making authority is not the auditor, decision-making authority is the Sharia board. Auditor has to see the compliance. Now, only one situation is there when the auditor can question the Sharia board. Now Sharia board has a clear non-compliance of Sharia standards of Yufi in a country where Sharia standards of Yufi are adopted. Now, this is a situation where the auditor's scope says that he has to see compliance of Sharia principles and rules. And Sharia principles and rules as per Yufi definition put Yufi Sharia standards above the Sharia board decision. What does it mean? It means that you have to uh, follow the Sharia standard. If you don't follow the Sharia standard, there is a caveat that the interpretation of the Sharia standard is still has to be done by the Sharia board. But if you are in a blatant non-compliance of Sharia standard, then the auditor can ask you and the auditor can write in his report that in that situation he is qualifying the report or kunnigat saying that the institution is not complying with Sharia principles and rules because the institution is complying with the Sharia board, but not with the Sharia standards of Yufi which are adopted in the country. We have comment from Fozul Azim Azim. For correction of the whole document to UK English grammar and spelling rules, kindly run spell check on the whole document using. UK dictionary and grammar rules and application like MS Word. Thank you very much, Brother Fazul Azim. Thank you very much. It's a very good comment. I do, I agree. Actually, what happened that uh we have been using the UK English for standard setting for for past several years. But somehow some things were not consistent and you know at times different people added the document in the working group etc. But as a, at A O F, we have proper writing guidelines which follow the UK English and for some of the things we have, you know, we have very detailed writing guidelines. We are trying to implement them in in due course. Thank you very much for your kind comment. Next comment is from Brother Kabir Nasir, the definition of Makasid in this presentation is the classical definition and these caveats are also mentioned by scholars. Thank you very much, Brother Kabir. I think that in line with Sharia principles and rules was not in the definition that we found. Uh but the, and we inserted it, but thank you very much for your kind comment. Uh S M Anwarul Islam, Islam wa alaikum, in recent days, people are following those which is fit for him and bypass which is not allowed in Sharia like like Islamic FIs are employing women to marketing job, they are working outside. Another issue is in many F FIs, a team, a term is very popular that is corporate culture by activities totally based on capitalism. Which type of FIs they are. Brother Anwarul Islam, uh I partially agree and partially disagree with you. And the point is that uh that uh right now, it will be out of ambit for me for today's discussion to say whether these FIs are compliant or not. Uh we, our spoke for Sharia compliance normally but report is the financial arrangements and contracts and transactions. So from that perspective, I think that it is still possible that an institution might not be following uh Sharia in some of the cultural aspects or some of the general aspects but is compliant with regard to the financial transactions which is the main spoke for A O F as of now. And we believe that some of these things can be implemented only in a full, uh you know, uh in a, in a, in a, in Islamic society, which is a completely Islamic society following all Sharia principles. So from that perspective, I would be, uh I would not be like to know, uh fully endorsing your comment. Thank you very much, sir. Uh we have comment from Sister Rajda Anapur, in the event of a conflict in respect of what the auditor finds and S B will he qualifies opinion, he doesn't find a satisfactory response. Sister Rajda, this is not a comment, uh this is not a discussion point for today, but in a nutshell, yes. Uh I will not go in more detail because I already explained some detail and it's not a subject of today, so but I will simply say yes. Uh but again, auditor finds, but that auditor finds, just to, again, as I said, yes, so I need to clarify. Auditor finds against a Sharia principle and rule coming from the items of hierarchy above Sharia board. There are five items of hierarchy. So Sharia board is the fifth item of hierarchy. So if there is a conflict and auditor finds a conflict with the A O F Sharia standard, central Sharia board, a central cha- uh country Sharia regulations, central Sharia board rulings or the financial accounting standards of A O F having Sharia implication. So if I, out of these four, there is a non-compliance, then he will only qualify. Otherwise, he will not qualify if it is his own personal opinion. Timing of conducting Sharia audit is also important, so I don't want to take, uh it should be done semi-onual basis, I do not like to comment on this because this is not related to subject of today. I can tell you today's subject is so long that I am afraid that I'll, I'll not be able to, like right now, we have more, spent more than an hour right now. And we have just, we have not just completed the definitions, we are on definition edge. So you can just think of having, maybe I have three hundred fifteen slides and we are standing on slide number. What is the slide number right now? Twenty-three. So just, I am a bit afraid that I cannot take any question outside of the ambit, please. One of the common mistakes is to consider Makasid as evidence on itself. Conversely, sahich Makad Maksat should, Makasid, each Maksat should be supported by authentic evidence. Mustafa Shah, uh Sahid Abdullah. Rather, Mustafa, excellent comment, excellent comment. I don't disagree. Uh Sister Zahra, please note, noted how we incorporate it, okay? Uh I suggest that we, suggest the board that we need to write it somewhere in a proper way, maybe in the same basis of conclusion that we were referring to. But thank you very much, brother. I suggest the attendance of C E O in the meeting of Sharia board to make matching, uh matching issues and implementation. Uh Br- uh Brother Tariq Takriti, Muhammad Tariq Takriti, Brother Muhammad Tariq, uh while uh C E O may be invited if the Sharia board wants, but I don't think that it should be a mandatory thing because it can influence the decision-making of the Sharia board. So we do not make it mandatory, uh and again, it's not a subject of today's discussion. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, so I want to move. I think Brother Yusuf Shannar had some comments, Brother Yusuf, your comments are still in the chat window, not in the Q and A tab. So I request you to put them in here and anybody else who has put it, their comments in the chat window, please, uh if you can put them here. Uh product development process, uh I'm, I'm just quickly mov- moving ahead. Now coming to key areas of S D M process. So the S S B of an I F I is generally, is generally the primary organ of Sharia decision-making in an I F I, this is well understood. Uh product approval. Now, first part is Fatwas and other S S B decisions, product approval. The S S B is required to approve products and services offered by I F I. These products and services can be divided into two categories, standard products and, and the uh standard products and one-off or like, you know, bespoke sort of products. Uh we have put that, this section provides some basic requirements with regard to the standard products and the bespoke or uh non, non-standard products etc, where you actually come up with with unique transactions. So at times, some of the, some of the, uh some of the uh Sukuk and some of the some of the syndicated financing, consortium financing transactions may be like this. Now, we have put in that what, these are the minimum requirements for the Sharia board for the standard product. There must be a product concept paper. There must be final version of legal documentation, there must be transaction recording and reporting for accounting purposes. This is an important part, a lot of scholars actually don't go into it, but this is important that how the transaction will be reflected and whether it will be reflecting the true essence. I T mapping of the product is also important that whether the I T system is actually able to support the product implementation. Marketing materials here, we have put them as a part of like, you know, the review material because marketing material at time can include some of the things which are like, you know, for example, making up, making a promise or making an agreed rate or something on a transaction which has a which cannot have agreed date, things like this. And grand relevant standard operating procedures manual at product for time. So we are saying that Sharia for standard products, you need to review all of it. Once you review all of it, then it is on autopilot. Then obviously, if you have all these things reviewed one time, then everything doesn't need to come to Sharia board all the time. But non-standard products, most of the things have to come to Sharia board, in which case they have to review the structure, legal documentation. Obviously, there will not be a a manual standard operating procedure, account, uh uh like, you know, all these things, but accounting even for those products will be important. Then, the first part was product approval. The second part is queries. Queries are where you get some queries from the ma- from the relevant department. So there are transactional queries and non-transactional queries, including the financial queries related to accounting, policy provision, uh calculation of Zakar, disbursement of charity etc. And then non-financial queries related to marketing, promotion, human resource, publication activities and the development queries for related improvement in standard products etc. So there can, there are product approvals, there are queries. Third part is observations. Observations is where the Sharia board, Sharia, the, the the Sharia audit, internal or external or Sharia compliance department or even the regulator at time, they find some, they have a finding for Sharia compliance and that is of observations area where the Sharia board has to respond against the observations. Into the today, as the, the last public hearing had some of them in detail. Uh but again, feel free to provide any comment on these, uh these topics. Now, there is one very important area which I would like to touch upon and I would like to emphasize on the differences. So here we are saying that, that Sharia decision-making by the central Sharia board shall generally follow the principles applied above, but it should also consider the following aspects. Because primarily due to C S B having regard to the following factors beside others, the impact of the, that impact on the S D M process. So for the Sharia, for the Sharia decision-making by the central Sharia board, uh I, I would say that a broader picture and macro vision becomes more important. So while something on an individual S S B's micro vision is specific to specific I F I and stakeholders, but if that thing becomes common or at a, at a broad, broad, broader level, then it may destroy the whole of the industry. So for example, we say that Tawaruk is allowed by respective Sharia board on need basis. But now what happens that if that, a practice of Tawaruk becomes eighty percent of the banking in a country, even on the liability side, now it is becoming common. In some countries, you can see the situation. Now, the question is that C S B, can C S B understand that this is a necessity at the national level like this? We know C S Bs like Oman etc, who have not allowed the Tawaruk transaction, they're not, and still the industry is prospering very well. So the question is, w- w- at time, the view that is taken by the central Sharia board is not according to the individual interest of the institution. Rather, it is on the greater interest of the whole industry, whole economy. Then, for example, we have due consideration to the wider interest of overall Islamic finance industry in jurisdiction and its long-term development as well as specific interest of the individual I F Is. So there are a few things that can impact, that can get a, a long, short-term benefit for institutions, but in the long term can hamper the growth of Islamic finance. So this is something that is important. Due consideration to the public interest. So the public interest is to be considered. Due consideration to socio-economic developments and other national and global objectives in the broader context of the national interest. So for example, in the national interest, it is important to promote agriculture sector. I'm just mentioning something. Now, the point is that central Sharia board can, can have a look or at some of the things that are happening in the industry from the perspective, broader perspectives, including the national interest aspects. More consideration of the overall ethical behavior and upholding of values by the overall industry. Uh more consideration to Makasid Sharia particularly with regard to reconsidering the individual permission of controversial products not in line with Makasid Sharia. This is the, one of the most important point. Sister Zahra, Makasid Sharia spelling, I think we are putting a hyphen here. So in the third line of F, hyphen is not there, just make a note of it. Consideration of the, or the precepts of do, or of, of do not harm, no mal- malveillance, do justice etc. So the additional aspects, and I think these are in, 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 in the, in consideration of whatever uh one of our brothers, I think Abdul Azim had mentioned. Thank you very much. I think you can see that we have put it in that considerations for C S B in addition to Makasid addition already. C S B shall be the sole authority in the respective country for this and once ruling of C S B is issued, the sole authority to interpret and apply the same in this specific context shall be the S S B of the respective I F I. And decisions by the management and the organs of the management other than S S B. This is another important aspect which is not generally understood in the market, but we believe that is important. So we are saying that why the, while the primary authority for S D M in an I F I is generally the S S B, there are several aspects of S D M which are the responsibility of overall governance organs other than the S S B. Sister, governance and management organs here, okay? Management, yeah, management and governance organs. Uh this is mainly due because of several peculiarities in relation to S S B's function as follows. A, the S S B's primary role does not include business decisions such as which project to choose if multiple options are permissible but have differences from the perspective of Makasid. The S S B's involvement is limited to the advisory supervision for S D M while the responsibility to conduct, of conduct or conduct of business rests with those charged with governance and management. And the S S B may suggest but cannot impose a decision that is based on recommended but not mandatory higher standards of ethics and values. So Sharia board can say that, okay, this is ethical and this is less ethical or less preferred, but they can import, cannot impose it. But it's the board of directors, those charged with governance and the management who have to impose that. Decisions of those charged with governance, those charged with governance, govern the I F I, that is, mostly those charged with governance are the board of directors in our context. Govern the I F I on behalf of the owners and our ultimate authority for setting the strategy and the to- and the tone for business operations that relevant decision-making. They shall always ensure that the I F I makes the right choices from among the different Sharia compliant options available while giving due attention to ethics, values such as fairness and transparency, right and expectation of relevant stakeholders and Makasid Sharia. Decisions, uh those charged with governance shall ensure that the internal policies of an I F I are developed in a manner that the S D M processes of the management and governance organs are in compliance with the requirements of this standard. Uh decisions of senior management. Senior management is normally the authority for business D C operations and relevant decision-making in an I F I. As part of day-to-day functioning of an I F I, senior management has to apply its judgment to the decision-making process. While the overall strategy is to be approved by the board of directors, the development of such strategy and its implementation are primarily the domain of their senior management. Sister, again here, I think we need to consider board of directors versus uh those charged with governance because I, I, wherever we have used, I think we need to use both those charged with governance and we need to define it properly. Just make a note of it and secondly, as most places we have used I F I, so I think we need to discuss it with working group again. Because maybe we have more things in the context of I F I, so we leave it I F I here instead of institution. The, the most crucial test for an I F I senior management is making the right choices within multiple Sharia compliant options while managing a delicate balance between the expectations of the relevant stakeholders, Makasid Sharia and operating in line with institutional policies. Decisions of S C D, that is Sharia compliance department, product development, P D, I S, internal Sharia audit and other organs. The S C D, P A D, I S A, another relevant organs of governance, functions of management have to play their respective roles in that scheme process. This role is primarily regard to providing the eventual Sharia decision-makers with relevant and useful information and research that will enable them to make the right decisions. Now, we have two comments again. One is from Brother Mustafa Shahid Abdullah. I have another comment outside the subject matter though regarding those who will be certified with Sharia audit and advisor. Or if we manage it, must make it among the requirements of applicant must have at least Bachelor of Diploma in Sharia, Fikha, Usul, Fakta and Syapal Maamlaat. Many people have the certified who know nothing about Sharia. Brother Mustafa, in a national A O F Sharia advisor program, Sharia, uh S C S A program is now divided. Now, we have already conducted the last exam of C S A. Uh I know it's out of ambit of today's discussion, but I'm just mentioning for the benefit of all audience today, that the old C S A program is over. Now, we have uh either a certificate of proficiency in Sharia and Sharia standards, which is equivalent to earlier C S A more or less. But it's a single paper exam, but the proper exams will be now divided in two parts, certified Sharia advise auditor program and certified Sharia expert program. Our new certified Sharia expert program will be covering uh much more things as compared to the old program, same applies to the certified Sharia auditor program. So uh uh we agree with your observation and we are working on this part, particularly in the C S E exam, some of the Sharia Fikha, Usul, Fakta and Syapal Maamlaat related aspects have been added. Thank you very much. Uh again, it was uh something out of ambit, so although I, I, I covered it, but I prefer not to do it because today managing time will be actually difficult. Uh Sister Zahra, I think we are supposed to take a break at, at, now or later, what is the?
Eleven thirty, yes.
Yeah, but let me see quickly because the prayer time is shortly to be starting in, in Bahrain. I think it's just started or just going to start, but let me just have a look at the time when the, when the overtime starts. I think already started three, four minutes back. So uh let me take this comment and complete this section, then we take a fifteen to twenty minutes break. So let me quickly take this comment and complete this section related to S D M process. So since it is governance-related standard, especially Fatwa rules, don't think it's mostly repetition of Fatwa ethics standard too, specifically many conditions are related administrative nature. There must, must be concise. Uh Brother Mohammed Imran, thank you very much for joining in. Now, quick point. Uh reputation of Fatwa ethics is standard, I think we have very minimal repetition of that. That standard is, I think, four, five page standard, this is a seventy page standard. Even if we repeat all of it, maybe it will be just twenty, twenty percent or fifteen percent of this one, but I can tell you that we did not repeat most of it. Except for some definitions and some basic requirements. The first thing is, it is building upon that. It's like, you know, that, that Fatwa standard, Sharia standard is in the center and this is building upon that. All, in all the aspects of decision-making and implementation and even the research and development and putting the information to the Sharia board and and the process itself, what sort of psychological tendencies etc may have. So that, I think that we believe that it cannot be a repetition of that if you see the whole of the standard, not at all. So first comment, I, I, I humbly disagree with you. The second comment is very important that many conditions are related to administrative nature, therefore must be concise. So the point is, brother, that, that we try to keep it concise, but we will be happy to find exactly what needs to be more concise. Uh we have tried to keep things principle-based and we are willing to make it more like, you know, principle-based if you suggest anything. So please feel free to suggest like, you know, further comments on that part. We look forward towards having exact comments on what needs to be more concise and what is not value adding here. So this section completes here. And before we move to the next section, I think we can take a break now for, now it's eleven thirty. And before we move to the next section, I think we can take a break now for, now it's eleven thirty-two Bahrain time, so we, eleven thirty-three. So, we take a break of seventeen minutes maybe. So, we join back at eleven fifty Bahrain time, Insha Allah. So, you all can keep connected and Insha Allah, we'll be continuing our discussion at eleven fifty Bahrain time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we should start. It's already eleven fifty, Malin time, eleven fifty two, so I think we should start.
Yes.
Okay. A'udzubillahiminashshataanirrejim. Bismillahir Rahmanur Rahim. Welcome back everybody again. Uh this is, I can see some people have left in between. I hope they will join back again shortly. Still we have more than one hundred people attending. So this is good and I hope everybody is connected and is available. So I'll share my screen again now. Now, the second section that we are discussing today is significant considerations in the S T M Sharia decision making process. First is Sharia decision makers should take into consideration the factor may influence the outcome of Sharia decision. How it may adversely affect overall Sharia compliance of the I F I. These factors are avoidance of non-disciplinary fatwa and jurisprudential arbitrage. And consideration of maqasid and avoidance of psychological tendencies. So we are talking about three things. Number one, non-disciplinary fatwa, jurisprudential arbitrage should be avoided. Second part is maqasid are to be considered for decision making. And third part is that we need to avoid the psychological tendencies that impact the decision making process. So avoidance of non-disciplinary fatwa, the core principle is that I F I shall avoid non-disciplinary fatwa and jurisprudential arbitrage at all. The objective of fatwa research should be to find the most authentic and reliable opinion that is suitable for the respective circumstances. This is the core principle. So the fatwa should not be just to justify something that I want. Rather, it should be to find the right solution. It shall not merely be aimed towards obtaining an approval in favor of a predetermined outcome while jeopardizing the objectivity of the process. In the normal context of an I F I, non-disciplinary fatwa may generally not apply due to the existence of established S S B in line with U F E governance standards and their respective regulatory requirements. However, there is a remote risk of another form of non-disciplinary fatwa occurring by I F I by way of the intentional replacement of scholars within the S S B. Intended to primarily attain the same objective of non-disciplinary fatwa. If the continuing members of S S B become aware of such a situation, they shall consider an appropriate course of action. Uh I think at this point that appropriate course of action, we had long discussion. One of the view was they should consider the resignation as well. But again, then we left it like, you know, up to the judgment of the scholars, how they decide. But if it is actually happening, that some of the scholars are being replaced in the board to get a fatwa of the choice. And this is something, don't tell me that this does not happen. I can tell you this happens in the market and we have evidence of that, that it has happened in the market from time to time. It is highly recommended on account of good professional and ethical practice that in case of newly appointed members of S S B or other Sharia decision makers intend to change a previous fatwa. They should preferably consult their predecessors via management where necessary to understand the rationale. Sister, uh via management, after that there should be a comma, via management where necessary, okay? To understand the rationale and basis of conclusion for the earlier decision. This would significantly improve the objectivity and accuracy of conclusions reached in the S T M process. This is professionalism. You know, in the audit profession and some other profession, you will find this as a professionalism. That the previous predecessor auditor or predecessor consultant is actually consulted and approached. To see what was his justification for our opinion, which the new one wants to change. And I F I shall in no case be involved in a proactive approach for proactive search for a scholar and or Sharia consulting firm with intent to provide favorable. For a predetermined outcome, including the replacement of S S B members primarily with such intention. So this is the responsibility put on the management and the I F I that they should not be doing it. Whereas Sharia scholar competent for the membership of an S S B becomes aware that the primary purpose of his appointment in place of another scholar is non-disciplinary fatwa. Accepting such an appointment will be considered a breach of good governance and ethical requirements. So if you are a Sharia scholar and if you are aware that you are being appointed. Because your views are known with regard to a matter on which this institution needs a change. So this is something where you should consider that it is not actually happening on merit, rather it's happening because of something. That is, you know. Sorry to say that is a jeopardized process of fatwa taking. Uh avoidance of non-disciplinary fatwa, continuity, a Sharia decision maker in order to avoid non-disciplinary fatwa shall always ensure compliance with Sharia principles and rules and strictly according to. Uh Sister Zahra, please make a note of it and strictly ensure compliance, it should not be without strict end. Strictly according to the respective hierarchy. Uh as defined, yeah, and iron might not be needed, okay? We'll see, but we just need to see this part, okay?
Um.
During the S T M process, the Sharia decision maker shall consider the impact of decision on the reputation of the I F I as well as Islamic finance industry as a whole. So that even the definite reputation part is important here. Then the second area is related to maqasid. So we are saying that according to that, S T M should take into consideration the following in the order of hierarchy. So number one, Sharia principles and rules. Number two, maqasid, maqasid, Sharia, with due consideration of maqasid, loqud and ethics. So now, I think I'll go back to the comment from our respected brother. Who talked about, I think it was brother Lazim who talked about, like, you know, or the other brother who talked about this one. The the risk of, risk of maqasid tendency. So if you see, we have a very clear hierarchy here that principles and rules come first. And maqasid comes second, and maqasid also have to consider maqasid, loqud, ethics and values. So this is the priority sequence that we have. And Sister Zahra, please make a note of it that when we put the basis of conclusion on that. Uh that definition part, we should create a reference to this paragraph twenty nine also, that here we have put a hierarchy as well. Brother Mufti Khajal Noorul Hassan referred section twenty four, does the discussion need to be documented as well or just change or modify as per the new board's opinion, what is happening in general? Uh brother, uh Khajal Noorul Hassan, thank you very much for joining in. Brother, the point is, from our perspective, documentation is a must, new one. And actually, when we said that they should consult the predecessors, then obviously it's some, in the institutional framework, it is understood that. This, this like, you know, consultation with the predecessors is to be documented. So either it will be a written question and written answer, or it will be a meeting in which there will be proper minutes. That is our understanding. But again, we do not want to be micromanagers and define like, you know, nitty grittys and that. It is, I think, understood that you need to follow the good governance practices. However, we'll take your comment and if you feel that the documentation is necessary. We will consider that the board, take it to the board and working group if they consider it's necessary. Now, consideration of maqasid, sorry, and then after the maqasid, the third, maqasid has to be considered in three, four aspects. First, maqasid with due consideration of maqasid, loqud, ethics and values, legitimate business objectives and institutional sustainability and C S R and sustainability considerations. So these are all to be considered for the purposes of determining of the Sharia decision making. Now, the continuity of this section, an I F I S T M process and lot time taken to consideration maqasid, Sharia, where next three, the Sharia principles, the rules shall be understood and interpreted in the context of relevant maqasid. Particularly, it is highly recommended that whenever two different conclusions under Sharia principles and rules are acceptable. The Sharia decision maker shall give preference to the conclusion which is more aligned with maqasid. It is a very, very important point that we are asking the board, the Sharia board, the board, the management. That if there are two options acceptable within Sharia, Sharia rules and principles. You should opt for the one which is more aligned with maqasid. As Islamic finance is meant to be a value-based service, I F Is are encouraged to give due consideration to the best practice of value-based and responsible financial services as well as social and societal aspect. As such as those contained in the U N D P sustainable goals, sustainable development goals, United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, United Nations Principles for Responsible Investment. And the U N Environment Programme Principles for Responsible Banking in their S T M process. The principles encompass social, economic and environmental dimensions of development and responsible behaviour among other. And these inspirations are largely in line with the principles and objectives of Sharia. I F I should consider incorporating such principles as far as consider Sharia compliance in their decision making. Uh in their decision making to enhance the value proposition of their Sharia compliant products and services. It is also important to understand that the compliance of the requirements of paragraph thirty, thirty two is not primarily. Sister, just need to check the references again. And there is, there is a space between thirty, thirty two. I think we are talking about thirty, thirty one. But, but, okay, because this is paragraph thirty two itself. It is not primarily the responsibility of the S S B or I F I, although it has to play its due role. In normal circumstances, whenever two different options within Sharia principles and rules are available. The S S B will identify and justify the possibility of both. At this stage, the senior management at a time, those charged with governance have a more important role. In such decision as they need to choose one of the two or more permissible option to be applied in the conduct of business. Then consideration of maqasid, so we referred this already, that C S B and the regulator have to consider maqasid more. Now coming to avoidance of psychological tendencies. And here it is very important that I'll take you through some of the examples as well. So, so we are saying that the psychological tendencies should be avoided which impact the decision making process and those psychological tendencies. Uh should be avoided by both the management as well as the Sharia board. So Sharia board should all be conscious about it. And the management should also be conscious about it and all organs of governance, all respective functions shall consider that. Uh the important psychological tendencies include, I'll, I'll take you, after this discussion, I'll take you to the appendix to quickly discuss some of the examples. So first one is the framing tendency when a decision maker makes a decision based on the way the information is presented as opposed to the facts. Uh I, I, I'll, I'll discuss more details with regard to like, you know, this, so you need to avoid. You need to avoid the framing tendency by having, having, like, you know, having proper information about the issue. And, and then we apply the relevant Sharia rulings and verification of the matter needs to be done. And, 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 I think, you know, taqdeel manat related, all requirements that are there in Sharia, they should apply here on framing and other tendencies. An encouraging tendency is that, the common tendency of giving disproportionate weight to first information received. Again, you need to have objective information and consider all aspects. Another very important tendency is the status quo tendency whereby the decision maker may consider a prevailing practice as the reference point. So you have a reference point because there is a prevailing practice and you do not go for details and you do not go for objective decision making on that part. This includes even situations where like, for example, there was something allowed for zarura or maslaha. Now, zarura, maslaha, need, necessity, these were, these were the reasons for giving a justification, but now you take it for granted. So I know a situation where, where, where the zarura or maslaha allowed taking, taking the conventional, conventional reinsurance by the Takaful company. Now, those Takaful companies are taking it as a given point, okay? This is given. Now they are asking for more permission to take more outside the limit also. So this is, this is like, you know, at times a very important to understand that what status quo might not always be the best way. Then we have, again, you, you know, there, there are aspects to that. Again, because we have some examples on that, so I will be taking you to those examples first. So I like, you know, prefer not to go in too much detail of this section right now. Then, one very important thing, that, that, that some of the factors that actually influence the decision maker. On the status quo tendency include the managerial influence. Like, for example, the management displays a strong bias in favor of a specific solution to issue because intends to maintain the status quo. So current practice, et cetera. The second point is resistance against new initiatives. The third point is again scholarly reputation. So if, if something is approved by senior scholars at times. Any junior scholar will never question or challenge it on an objective basis because of the scholarly reputation. Next tendency is the confirming evidence tendency that this is the tendency to search for a favor or first. Search for or favor evidence and information that confirms one's pre-existing beliefs or hypothesis. So there is an issue in front of you and you consider that, okay, I know the answer for it already. So what you do, you just go and find the evidence supporting your answer. So you, you can say, okay, I can find the answer in this book and this book and this book. And from that perspective, you just go for the confirming evidence rather than doing an objective analysis of the situation. And evaluating the merits and demerits of the, of the argument from all the angles. Uh then we have. Uh exaggerated threat of financial loss tendency, most common by the management. The management pressurizes the Sharia board all the time. Oh, if you don't do approve it, industry will collapse. If you don't do it, the institution will collapse. They say, oh, shall we close the bank? Okay, now this is the way of pressurizing on the exaggerated threat of loss financial tendency. Again, same examples like, the one of the example that I've mentioned two times, I've mentioned third time. That is the, that is the, that is the conventional insurance by the Takaful operators, okay? Oh, Takaful operators, Reetakafu operators are charging more or there is a risk of like them having a lower rating. So effectively, the pressure comes on the Sharia board to approve these things. Availability tendency, availability tendency refers to the human tendency of relying on immediate examples that come to a person's mind while evaluating a specific topic, concept or decision. So it is slightly different from confirming evidence because confirming evidence is that I know the issue and I want to find only the confirming evidence. While availability tendency is the first thing that is, that comes to mind, like, you know, something that is readily available, something that has recently happened, et cetera. Fundamental attribution error tendency that also knows as components bias or the over attribution effect. Refers to the tendency of over emphasizing on the role of personal traits and internal affairs, internal factors. Coupled with under emphasizing on the situational explanation and external influences for explaining a phenomenon. So you attribute it to personal traits, you attribute it to some other factors, you do not, you do not evaluate it on an objective basis. Hallo effect and reverse hallo effect. Hallo effect refers to the tendency of allowing a positive impression arising because of specific traits about an individual department, institution in one area. Positively, one area to positively influence one's decision or opinion in another area. While reverse hallo effect is, is opposite where, where the negative impression or the negative views about some, some person, institution, et cetera. Impacts your decision making. Overconfidence tendency, one of the worst ones, you know, where, where I feel that, oh, I know the answer. So the overconfidence tendency refers to excessive confidence in one's own ability and accuracy when answering questions or making a decision. So, okay, the point comes to me. I say, oh, I already know the answer. My answer is yes. Okay, thank you very much. The process closed. And while we fully respect the knowledge of the individual scholars, the point is that it's very important to understand that every. Institution in the institutional framework need to have a appropriate objective process of decision making on the Sharia side. So it should not be impacted by the overconfidence of, of the people, rather even, I can tell you overconfidence issue is not with the Sharia board alone. We have seen the overconfidence issue in the Sharia audit, Sharia compliance and the management. They all say, oh, we know the answer already. We don't need to even, even bother to evaluate and do the research and evaluate the pros and cons of different options. So considering all these things, there are people who will, who will always be like, you know, in a position to, I would say. Uh to, to make a answer quickly, even if they may not be very well versed with the. All the details about the issue and with all the pros and cons of different decision making aspects. So from that perspective, overconfidence tendency at all levels is one of the, one of the most significant tendencies that affect the right decision making. Self-serving tendency refers to the common human tendency to claim more responsibility for successes than for failures or to evaluate ambiguous information in a manner that benefit, that is beneficial to one's own interests. Now, I'll take you to some of the examples of these tendencies before like, you know, I, I, I come back to the continuity of the standard. Sorry, 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 sorry. This section is above. Okay, so this is appendix B, examples of psychological tendencies. So let's take the first example. Uh it is said that Mufti, Mufti at times is greatly influenced by the fatwa seeker to as to how the matter is presented and framed. So hence framing the question is not only a governance issue, it serves the Sharia applications. So what happens that the way it is presented will impact. So for example, that, this is in pattern, and said, and became said. That is reported. That is reported to said that maybe someone amongst you can present his case more eloquently and consistently than the other and I give my judgment on his favor according to what I hear. Be, 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 beware if ever I give by error somebody, somebody, something of his brother's right, then he should not take it as I have only given him a piece of fire. This is, this is the situation that actually like, you know, because of the way you presented. And particularly the Sharia compliance department and the product development team, uh, they are taking price of eloquent individuals to try to convince the Sharia board by way of emotions or supports. Gestures presenting their case in highly convincing matters to the SSB. So when you present to the SSB. You should try to present it not like a just an advocate, rather you should try to present it as a researcher. Uh, because this is very important to understand that your way of presenting may impact the decision of the Sharia board. And in that situation, we have just referred to this hadiths. And this impacts the framing tendency and fundamental attribution error tendency and related organs of governance include the Sharia board, senior management. Sharia compliance department and the product development department. Uh, let me put a few questions, few examples and then I'll take questions one by one. I can see there are some questions coming in. Uh, a fatwa endorsing conventional insurance is attributed to a famous scholar in the early twentieth century. It is narrated that insurance explained, explained to him that insurance like Mudaba contract, when one party provides capital, other manages the fund. The study scholar considered it a Sharia compliant product based on the limited information presented to him. This was really reality misframing of the product. So this is one, like, you know, example that one independent Mufti can also be impacted by framing tendency. There is an inevitable risk that the fatwa seeker may present a case according to his understanding, maybe ignore certain important aspect that impact the Sharia ruling. In some instances, the fatwa seeker may deliberately misrepresent, misframe the matter to manipulate its Sharia ruling. Therefore, rather than relying solely on the questioner or fatwa seeker, Imam Muhammad, uh, may Allah bless him. Uh, uh, who used to visit markets to understand the nature of business and the prevailing commercial tax in order to enhance his own understanding of the contemporary practices. So this is very important for the Sharia board that they do not believe, rely only on the fatwa seekers that is normally the product development and other departments. Rather, they involve others to understand well what is the reality of the transaction, how we do it. And this is the way of avoiding the framing tendency. Uh. The, uh, uh, next example is about, about, like, about some debit, merchant course for credit and debit transactions. About like, you know, goods and services which are, which include predominantly impermissible goods and service. To increase the credit size of credit card portfolio, product development team and senior manager requested the SSB to allow the unblocking of several merchants. Their view such prohibition not only hinders the growth of Islamic credit card portfolio but also impact the growth of saving and current accounts that the user of debit card also wants some services. So the point is that while the earlier decision of not allowing something because it predominantly including permissible is there. But the way the management presence is, is not that we are talking about Sharia compliance etc. Rather, we are talking about. The growth of Islamic finance and this is impacting the general, general saving and current accounts as well. So this is like, you know, confirming evidence tendency, exaggerated threat of loss, financial loss tendency and financial attribute, fundamental attribution error tendency. So multiple tendencies can be there in one example that we are referring to here. Another example is that, that only ten percent of Islamic banking country is Islamic, so the, so the management proposes. That in order to increase the, increase the proportion which we can approve a highly controversial product. Like the example that we are talking about, uh, here we have not mentioned Tawarok, but actually the example that we were referring to was about Tawarok. That there are management who are taking some controversial products in front which are not allowed by the Sharia boards earlier. And saying that it is going to help, going to help growing the industry. So the point is that the fundamental, uh, like, you know, for, uh, issue here is that it is a framing tendency. That instead of the merit of the transaction or instead of the merit and the evaluation of the process. Uh, we are anchoring it or we are framing it in a way that Sharia board gives a decision in favor of the transaction. I will not be discussing all the examples, maybe I'll take you to some other examples which might be like, you know, more. Again, there are forty four, forty, forty one examples, I believe thirty to thirty nine or forty examples, which are all very good examples. Uh, let me take this example that a management of an I F I presents a new transaction to the SSB. Transaction presentation was such that they presented a process to of competitor I F I's product. Which had previously been discussed and rejected in earlier SSB meeting. In this meeting, the management had requested that this. As Sharia compliance department to identify the key issues in the product that were the reason for earlier rejection. The P D represents the alternative changes to avoid the controlled efficiency in earlier product, earlier product. As listed down by the Sharia compliance department. Based on these presentations, the SSB approved the product. However, the way that the product was presented did not allow the Sharia board to consider other aspects of the product or to conduct sufficient research of the product independently. Or to consider the broader objectives of Sharia. So again, it's anchoring and framing that, okay, you did not approve this product earlier. But now we are just saying, okay, these were the five factors which were there, we have, we have eliminated. Now, maybe there were not only five factors, there might be ten factors, there might be other aspects that need to be considered. But the way it is presented is, okay, this is a product which is already being done by the competitors. These are the four, five factors that because of which the earlier Sharia board was not allowing it. Now we frame it in a manner or enter in a manner that we enter it with the earlier product approval or disapproval. And we frame it in a way that we just talk about the four or five factors, okay, we eliminated them. Instead of having a complete comprehensive example of that. This one is again, uh, an example like, you know, about the demand of the customers are like, you know, the sense their customer are more. More like, you know, more used to the conventional type of products, so better to offer these sort. Like, you know, some, some of the controversial products and this can increase the. Once we do it, we will eventually increase to the ideal model of financing. I can tell you, this is a very common sentence that, okay. Let's start with this one and then we will improve. Okay, sorry to say, wherever we have seen these controversial products coming in, it never improves. Actually, they just, they just kill other products, particularly if I refer to Tawarok. Our experiences when Tawarok is introduced is start killing other products. It never happens that you, you reduce Tawarok to necessity and you say that, okay, Tawarok will be limited to this aspect. No. Once you allow it, it takes over, it takes over all of the things, particularly considering that Tawarok gives you more or less exactly same like conventional banking like approach. Which is very convenient for most of the bankers. Again, status quo and exaggerated threats of loss tend, tendency might be there. Uh, an important, uh, and another example is, uh, a subsidiary of a global Islamic banking group loses its regulatory status as an I F I. On account of continuous and significant non-compliance with Sharia principles and rules and regulatory regulation. The management is largely to blame for this. The SSB advises improvement from time to time but with, to no effect. Those charged with governance of the parent entity and the principal shareholders are unaware of the real situation and its gravity. As a result, the I F I loses its market share and more importantly is competitive advantage. Looking at the performance during the initial years where it post, posted profits and the management earned huge. Performance incentives and bonuses several years later, those charged with governance are the local management who reconvert the bank to an I F I. It was difficult, time-consuming and costly exercise. On account, on top of that, they had already lost competitive advantage. So again, self-service serving tendency and the status quo tendency are there. The product development of an I F I presented a structured transaction based on series of transactions which each transaction was already considered individually to be in line with Sharia principles and rule. However, the eventual effect by was the compounding of returns similar to conventional compounding interest-based transaction. The way the product was presented to SSB focusing on the permissibility of each transaction individually and which was already approved by SSB in some cases, other SSBs. Resulted in the SSB approving the structured transaction. So we did a structured transaction like replicating a conventional by combining four, five different transactions. Each one of the transaction was already approved by the board or, or other boards of the, uh, other institutions. So the result is that by framing and by availability tendency, we got approval of something which if was taken on an individual basis and seen on overall effect basis. Might not have been approved by the Sharia board, particularly considering maybe the maqasid, the loqood and maqasid of Sharia. I think we have three questions now, so let me take the questions. Uh, Dr. Yusuf Shanar, all thanks to brother, brother Yusuf, thank you very much. Uh, it must be emphasized that these tendencies are mostly or mostly individual in term of exercise the statistical confidence, so governance must take into account. Thank you very much, brother Yusuf Shanar. That is what we are trying to do, fully agreed with your comment. And that's why we have, we are even giving examples of these tendencies that how, uh, it, these can be addressed. Brother Fahim Razak, how would you argue overconfidence versus trust? I trust that my Sharia advisor is supporting. Brother Fahim, overconfidence is on myself and trust is on others. So when we are talking about overconfidence, like, for example, me sitting in the Sharia board. I can have overconfidence that I am already expert of this thing and I can answer. I remember one thing that one of my friends always argue, there was, uh, before joining A O F I, I was with one of the big four. And I was, uh, doing some Islamic finance work while there were some other very competent people. So one of very competent persons in our firm, uh, like, you know, he was, he was asked a question. And he quickly answered, which was, in my humble view, incorrect. Now, the point is the person was so much overconfident that he did not evaluate the model. Now, we had some argument and honestly, we got a heated argument. So then he said, okay, this is as per I F R S this and I F R S this, that, that. I said, okay, do you understand the business model? I, I would humbly say that you wouldn't, you don't even understand. Okay, right now I'm saying humbly, maybe it was a heated argument, so I didn't say that. So I remember one of our friends who was just with me, at times he used to remind me, brother Umar, you said it in the way. That, that you don't even understand the business model, so how you can be confident about your opinion? That was an accounting opinion, that was not a Sharia opinion. But the accounting opinion that this guy gave in two minutes was based on conventional business model. It was not based on Islamic business model, he did not even understand the business model of the transaction or the institution. He just gave his opinion based on overconfidence. So the overconfidence thing, brother, is more where you have the person having overconfidence. On his capability without going into detail, without evaluating the transaction detail, without referring to the source materials again. Without going to the, uh, to the essence of the transaction and the flow of the transaction, he gave his opinion on the accounting side. Same applies on the, on any of the board, it can always apply that even it applies to me as Umar, I'm just answering you like this. Okay, I may have overconfidence on myself, this needs to be tested. But the point is simple, whenever a question comes to you, don't be overconfident as individuals. So it's not issue of trust on others, it's issue of overconfidence on myself. When I have overconfidence on myself, I will never do the research. That is the issue. We, when you have a question coming to you, oh, I already know the answer, I will just say yes or no. Sorry, this is not appropriate for institutional framework. In the institutional framework, you should doc, understand the question correctly, you should understand the nitty gritties, the pros and cons, the process flows, the transaction details. You should read the whole of the contract. Only after that you can apply your judgment and obviously you need to go for research and you need to consult others. Overconfidence does not allow you to consult the books, it does not allow you to consult the, consult others, that is the problem. Thank you very much, brother. Brother Muhammad, you with a comment after the presentation is made by the acidic person, Sharia board must ask, please share what you have with them so far. Excellent comment, sir. It is an excellent comment. I fully agree that, that, okay, tell me what did you did not say. This is a good question, but I can tell you, sir, if they tell that, they will not get those bonuses. So, so the problem is here, the Sharia board has to apply their own judgment and ask some other people also. Like, you know, if necessary, you need to ask the relevant ground, ground level staff, you need to ask the relevant accounting people, audit people. To give their view about the product and you need to evaluate yourself that what else is there. And obviously, my submission never to answer immediately, never to be overconfident. Because if you are overconfident, you'll say, oh, yes, I'm okay with it. But if you are not overconfident, obviously it will improve. But thank you very much. Uh, my pleasure, brother Fahim, if it is understood, thank you very much. Now, let me take few more examples. Uh, so we move ahead. Uh, this was about now this ten. The product development of an, uh, product development of an I F I presented is structured target based on, sorry, this one I think we have discussed. The management of an I, sorry, this example has another aspect as well. In this example, I think we, we considered the senior management actually considering it positively as well and applying their judgment. Now coming to example eleven, the management of an I F I is facing a decline in profitability due to excess liquidity with no Sharia compliant avenues to invest. The management decides to place the money in conventional government bonds. Now, this is a real life situation, I have seen it in multiple institutions. So please don't say that, Omar, you are just blaming Islamic finance industry. No, I have seen this or similar transaction in multiple places, so. And, uh, and this is one place where I'm honestly, you know, shocked how we can have it. So in a nutshell, the management decides to place the money in conventional government bonds. However, it is proposed to the SSB in the following manner. The I F I will finance certain individuals through Tawarok who will then provide collateral in the form of a mortgage of property and additional certain interest-bearing government securities. To dilute the Sharia non-compliance risk, the collector will not include the interest receivable on such interest-bearing securities. The SSB approves the proposal. The eventual effect of the transaction is kept hidden from the SSB. Whereby the individuals are used as SPVs to purchase and hold the interest-bearing securities on behalf of the I F I and are given a very small. Spad against their service and for providing partial collateral through mortgage of their property. On the books of the I F I only financing through, based on Tawarok appear. It's something in real life. Islamic financial institution having excess liquidity, using a SPV or some individuals as SPV. To place the money in the conventional and using the same conventional bonds as collateral. Real life situation. Now, the question is, how, how the Sharia board approved it? Because Sharia board, again, if the Sharia board knew all of it and approved it, that is something completely different. But for normal situation, the Sharia board was subject to framing tendency, exaggerated threat of financial loss tendency. And self-serving tendency to understand, whereby the management has self-serving tendency. In, in this case, they all actually. Got into something that only the money coming from the common man. A common man who invests with Islamic financial institution considering that my money is going for halal purposes. Is just routed through this mechanism to the conventional boards or the conventional financial institutions. Now, this product would have been not allowed by, even as per, I think we have a footnote here. That even if the Sharia standard number thirty nine, uh, uh, does not allow to keep interest-bearing commercial papers. So if, if that relaxation from that Sharia standard requirement was not allowed, at least partially this transaction would have become impossible. But putting this all together, we are stuck. Another very important point is the management, we use terminology that are used in previous fatwa issued by SSB to describe a new situation, they may not necessarily be the same. To get similar fatwa that is favored by the management. Again, framing and confirming evidence tendency, framing, anchoring and confirming evidence. Confirming evidence tendency here is very important because you just give some, like, you know, use the terminology and link it to an earlier one. So you have the confirming evidence, okay, it was researched and it was approved, so we just get the approval. Uh, this is the conventional insurance product example, I have been discussing this example, so I'm not going in detail for that. Uh, like, another example, uh, the senior management of I F I presents this argument in favor of a controversial product by stating that. They had taken the opportunity to discuss the product with the regulator, major institution, the high net worth individuals and found them to be positive about it. In fact, the government has also shown interest in it if it is approved by the SSB. They urged the SSB to imagine the uptake of Islamic banking products. And services in the country if this product takes off simultaneously requesting the SSB to see the broader picture. So again, this goes in the other way around where, where the broader objectives, again, this is a question where. Where the maqasid tendency somebody mentioned and I would go back to that point that here, we are saying, oh, see the broader picture, see the greater objective of having Islamic finance. But by allowing the conventional products. Where the Mufti Khajranul Hassan, the conventional bond should be taken as security up to the principle will be acceptable for Sharia perspective, U F I general guidelines. Brother Mufti Khajranul Hassan, U F I does not allow it. Uh, it is allowed by scholars individually around the globe, but it is not allowed. Brothers, let's be very simple, if you have a conventional bond, why don't you encash that? Why you go for Islamic financing for that? Let me ask a simple question. And, uh, uh, again, you know, uh, that they said that, you know, uh, 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 you, you segregate the mosquito. And just get the whole of, whole of the camel, you digest whole of the camel. So the point is, so if you are financing and a person who is holding interest-bearing securities. And you are financing under Islamic mode to him and taking the interest-bearing security as a, as a, as a, as a, as a, as a security margin, as a collateral. It means that you are supporting him to continue doing the interest-bearing transaction. Am I right? Means that if you don't finance him, then we expect that he will have to encash it if he needs money. But the problem is that he doesn't need money. The problem is you want to use him as a, as a, as a, as a, as a, as a misguiding tool. You just put that person in place and actually you are the one who is investing in the conventional bonds. Now, making it Sharia compliant, it will be easy that you took some of his property as collateral and took, I, I think, even in the example, we have mentioned that interest, interest is not, is not acceptable security. As per U F I standard, interest-bearing securities are not acceptable security, not, not acceptable collateral. And I fully endorse that that is the right way. Just saying that, okay, up to the extent of principle, it is permissible, okay. It might be permissible for a situation other than this, but it is the situation where you are just supporting him to keep the securities. Which means that conventional business in flourishing because of you, because if you don't finance him, you will have to encash the security which you don't want. You want him to keep the money in security because you are just giving him a spread and keeping your own investment through this mechanism. Brother Khaja, when you are doing conversions, the customer already have those and for the time being, the financing cannot be clean financing. Some, sometimes properties, other properties and other collectors are not available. Brother Khaja, my view and your view might be different here. I may say that even, uh, like you know, this whole transaction has multiple issues. Number one, Tavaro. Tavaro by default, I have not seen a single Tavaro transaction in my whole life that complies with all the requirements of O I C Islamic Fakka Academy and U F I Sharia standard thirty. Never seen one single Tavaro transaction, number one. Number two, you do it and you support, so where it goes? You are supporting it. So, conversion, conversion means that you have to convert, but this interest-bearing security is not converting actually. Technically speaking, it's not converting. And again, uh, very clear exception for some converting customer. If it is approved by, on, on, only for a converting customer, that is something different. But here, what I'm talking about is not that, that is a conscious decision to keep investment in the conventional bonds. And for that, you just play this role, play this one. Okay, brother, uh, if you do istasna salam D M, D M, for D M, you don't need extra security. For D M, uh, for Dimashimusharaka, the asset is the security, okay? But for Murabha istasna salam, uh, if you want to take them security for Murabha istasna salam, honestly, if the customer is converting, again, on the basis of necessity, that may be allowed for a small period of time only during the conversion time. But would it be, uh, that is not the issue that I have raised in this example. The, if, if this example is about using the customer as caveat. You have used the customer as a conduit to actually invest in the conventional ones. So, if your example is slightly different from my example, where a customer is genuinely converting into Islamic, then the problem is again, if the customer wants to actually convert, why is not in cashing his interest-bearing securities? This will still be a question to me. Now, if it is the bank converting to Islamic, customer not willing to do Islamic as a whole, in that situation, I think a transition of, uh, transition, uh, a transitional approval may be granted. Again, I am not the scholar, I'm just talking about what is written in the standards. So, in my humble view, in the situation that you are talking, if, if we assume that it is the bank converting, not the customer converting. So, if the bank is converting and the bank has to convert the customer, so bank cannot force the customer to sell the interest-bearing securities. So, in that situation, I can agree. But brother, I know even the situations where the, where, where, the situation that I'm talking about are where there was a conscious decision of the bank to invest in interest-bearing securities through using these customers or S P Vs as conduit. So, the example that I'm talking about is slightly different from yours. And in your example, I think there can be a transitional exemption available based on necessity to the extent of principle only. But again, you have to go for more details on that, cannot be justified, all questions cannot be answered here right now. Got your point, so if both are converting, then it's okay, then up to a transitional period, you can do it. I can understand that, for a transitional period, you can do it for limited time, but you cannot have it a permanent thing. The example, our example, I have seen it in more than one countries, I have seen it in more than one banks. The management of I F I applies judgment to ensure a lucrative investment opportunity without due approval from S S B on the ground that is a common product which has been approved by other S S Bs. So, this is the example of, like you know, management took the action earlier and want to have a post facto approval by the Sharia board. And for that, they create the exaggerated threat of loss tendency and status quo tendency and framing tendency. The C E O, uh, again, uh, about the status quo, uh, it, it can be both ways. So, status quo tendency can be applied both ways, like doing the right thing or doing the wrong thing. So, it's a, the, the, this, this is like, you know, uh, this is the approach that we can apply. Like, you know, in this example, we have halo effect and reverse halo effect as well. The C E O of an I F I explains the status quo tendency to the S S B members who he believes to be highly conservative in their fatwas and fear that they, they should not approve a uniquely designed product. He described to them that status quo tendency is worth with the wrongly forces the decision maker to consider a prevailing practice as a reference point and other alternatives that vary from the baseline as inferior or undesirable. So, here, this example is the, the framing tendency, halo effect and status quo tendency applied in the opposite direction. So, after establishing the premise, he continues, the beauty of this unique product is that it is implemented in several unique ways as clearly evidenced in the way it is being used in different jurisdictions around the world. Even though one type of implementation differ from another implementation, they are all deemed Sharia compliant. I therefore implore that you, you to, to not to influence by status quo tendency and consider the fatwas issued by scholars by other jurisdictions. So, like this, this is the other way around where you are already standing on a good, uh, on a good practice and, and comparatively inferior practices are being promoted. Again, I'm not going to be like, you know, discuss all of the, uh, discuss all of the examples because of the limitation of time. I'm sorry, so. Uh, this example is very important. If a product is approved by famous Sharia scholars and is being practiced for a period of time by multiple I F Is, it often becomes a challenge for a new member of an I F I S S B to question it or even to suggest another alternative. When the new scholar challenged it and proposed a new alternative which is more in line with Maqasid Sharia. Sisters Zahra, please make a note of it, Maqasid Sharia spelling. We, we are using Alwir I F I, so please just make sure that it's corrected everywhere. The S C D provided him research based on the fatwas given by such senior scholars and respective I F Is as well as their published literary work on the issue. The new S S B member approved the, approved the existing product. This is partly because of the well-endowed reputation of those who approved it and partly because of general status quo tendency. Moreover, the research presented by S C D is one-sided. So, these are the real-life situations where you have the status quo condense, uh, tendency, confirming evidence tendency and halo effect and reverse halo effect tendency. This is a good point, again, a good example. A, a special S S B meeting is convened to discuss the latest developments in the local market. As were noted that the C S B established by the regulator has not allowed a product which was earlier, which is now allowed a product which was earlier not allowed due to certain controversies attached to it and due to practical difficulties in the implementation of Sharia compliance controls. Senior management supported by the research for, research from P D is putting pressure on the, on the S S B that since the S S B has allowed the product, the S S B must also approve it. The S S B believes that it is still better and safer for the I F I for not to venture into this new product. The S S B also believes that the I F I's control structure is not sufficiently robust to ensure that such a transaction will be properly implemented. So, if you see the management approach is about confirming evidence tendency and halo effect and tendency. But if you see the realities, that, uh, that, that is the, the S S B even has to judge whether the control structure of the I F I is good enough to get it implemented properly. They have to even assess if, 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 if this product is still good for the S S B. So, again, one decision by one board at the equal level or upper board might not always be like, you know, suitable for all situations. Uh, twenty twenty-one are opposite examples, but I'll take twenty-one. In a, the same scholar tried to convince the other members of S S B to follow the same checklist approach to ensure that a fatwa is issued only after consciously deliberating on fatwa on various aspects and adhering to certain procedures. The proposal was rejected as the other scholars thought that the way they have been working and making conclusions needed to improvement as well as checklist styles needed for juniors and not for top level experts. So, twenty, twenty was suggesting to have a good checklist-type approach towards, uh, towards making the decisions. Now, let me take this example also. An I F I has highly, high liquidity, but there is not enough growth in financing assets. So, into the absence of appropriate sovereign Sukuk and other Sharia compliant liquidities to meet, the management of I F I wanted to play, want to place the access liquidity with the conventional banks via Tavaro. The product details are presented before the S S B along with the examples of similar products in different parts of the world. However, the fact that U F I Sharia standards do not allow such transactions is not disclosed. The management puts pressure on the S S B that not approving it will put I F I in severe financial difficulties. It also mentions that the regulatory capital requirements for placement with conventional banks are near zero. While in case of Islamic financing transaction, there is a significant capital requirement and hence it will put I F I under additional and unnecessary competitive pressure. The S S B approves the product without specifying any Sharia controls or placement limits. Later, it is discovered that more than sixty percent of deposits were placed with conventional banks under this product and some conventional banks were utilizing the product proceeds for non-Sharia compliant activities. This is again, one of the very common examples where, no, it's, it's, it's a requirement of the Sharia standard that is non-compliant based on the, uh, based on the judgment, uh, taken by Sharia board or approval taken from Sharia board by the management through framing tendency, confirming evidence tendency, exaggerated set of laws tendency and fundamental attribution as error tendencies. This is an example of availability tendency. For example, there is a new scholar of the Sharia board, the Sharia board is presented with the issue of S C D that apparently resembles a recent case that was handled by the Sheikh in his capacity as member of S S B of another I F I. He relies on a reasoning judgment considering that two cases are similar and give the same fatwa without going through the details and following through the whole process that may have resulted in different conclusions in the specific case of the product at the time, as at time, general conclusions mean do not suit the specific cases. Another example is a matter of investment of excess liquidity when Islamic mutual fund is presented before the S S B of an I F I. Sheikh Zakhi, who is the S S B member opposes the idea because he has a personal experience whereby the former representative of the, of the fund appeared in attire that was deemed and approved by the Sheikh when he met the representative of such mutual fund. This view is taken without adequate analysis of the investment option. So, it is again that the, the impression of the person presenting the case was from the earlier, uh, earlier impression that the Sheikh himself had got it impacted the, its objective decision-making. So, maybe the, maybe the investment option was legitimate, but the personality impact impacted the decision. A senior scholar who is the chairman of the S S B of an I F I has a high degree of respect for the C E O of the I F I as senior banker. The Sheikh respects the C E O as a fundamental force for development of Islamic banking in the country, affect everyone nectologies. Whenever a product is presented by the C E O, the Sheikh approves it based on the trust he has for the C E O and does not check all the details with the same rigor that is his normal routine for such requests. In particular, whenever the C E O mentions that a product is necessary for the survival of the I F I and if the product is not approved, the I F I will suffer a big loss, the scholar believes them without further due diligence, due diligence or questioning. This is again, one of the common examples where exaggerated threat of loss and halo effect impact the decision-making. A young but learned Sharia scholar is the head of the S C D in I F I. He spent several weeks critically valuing arguments in favor of a transaction which he personally deemed impermissible. When his own research effort fails, he seeks guidance from his teacher and mentor who is also the chairman of the Sharia board of the same I F I and is the one who recommended him for this role. Given the shortage of time, the youngest scholar is only able to put forth a, a one single argument and a partial response to what is detailed reply from the S S B chairman which in his estimation was an off-track explanation of the point in the discussion. Eventually, the youngest scholar mentally rationalizes that transaction is permissible, not because he is convinced, but because the chairman is in favor of it to get, of it together with other senior scholars whose breadth and depth of knowledge are greatly, he greatly admires. He argues to himself that he must know some, they must know something that he does not. And that is how he actually justifies the, the, the decision of the senior scholars without actually being able to conclude himself on the issue. Sheikh Mohammed meets a neighbor every day during Fajr prayers. He does not know enough about him. However, being appointed as head of the city in a, the Kafal company, he comes to know that said neighbor is head of product development in the same Takafal company. Knowing the neighbor's religious inclination and appearance, Sheikh Mohammed has a very good perception of him. The head of P D then brings a request to that S C D to approve a co-insurance transaction with conventional insurance company in line with approval by S S B several years earlier. P D claims that it's very important from a business perspective. Relying on the religious inclination and appearance of the head of P D and his assurance that he will ensure Sharia compliance, Sheikh Mohammed approves the product without going through the details of its earlier approval and the validity of the rationale in the current, uh, situation. Sisters Zahra, rationale E is missing.
Come on, friend.
Okay. Again, it's a confirming evidence tendency and halo effect tendency based on, uh, uh, based on the personal, personal inclination of the person. Uh, another positive example, an I F I is unfortunately reputed as notorious for its repeated failings in compliance with Sharia principles and rules. While the, while the apparent real reason for the man practices the poor implementation of fatwas issued by the S S B, the market partner generally holds the S S B of the I F I responsible. One of the scholars resigned from the said S S B and joined the S S B of another I F I. During one of the S S B meetings, the new member points out a legitimate relaxation which could potentially overturn a longstanding fatwa preventing the I F I from undertaking certain transactions. The colleagues, instead of critically valuing the point on its merit, shrug it off and say that our new friend wants to use the principles of necessity and public interest in all matters in all of the I F Is of the country. Even though the relaxation has its own legitimacy, is not said due, due to such principle. So, the point is that the reputation that is carried with the person, because of being on the board of another institution, we'd had some problems, it actually impacts the decision-making ability of the colleagues in the Sharia board because they, they applied the negative perception and rejected something that was actually possible. Again, all these examples are about that you need to avoid the psychological tendencies and take everything objectively and everything on merit with due research and with due functions. Let me see if any other good example I want to take. All examples are good and you can all have, have a look at it and you can just provide your comments as needed. But I just want to see based on limitation of time that if I can have another point. This is also a good point. Mister Ahmed is a professional accountant in public practice and is regarded as one of the most learned accountants and technical experts on accounting matters. A complex matter related to Takafal accounting is presented to him by the management of a Takafal company. He provides his expert opinion, even though he is not an expert on Takafal and does not understand the core difference between Takafal and conventional insurance and the various models of Takafal. He does not perform additional research due to lack of time. The management relies on his opinion because of the reputation he enjoys. This results in accounting treatment by the Takafal company which is not compliant with U F I phases and also against the Sharia principles and rules. This is again, halo effect and reverse halo effect and fundamental attribution error and I would say more importantly, overconfidence tendency. Mister Hassan, who is a junior Sharia scholar and head of S C D of an I F I, claims in front of the SSB that he had asked the management to refrain from a transaction which was eventually considered impermissible by the SSB. However, he hides the fact that his conclusion was not grounded on on same Sharia principles and rules identified by the SSB. So we what we are saying is that he actually was was not able to do all the research etcetera that was necessary, but he was of the view that it should not be done. But now if the Sharia board is not approving this thing, he is trying to take the credit. This is self-serving tendency and this is again one of the one of the things that impact your decision making process. Sheikh Imran, who is a member of a C S B established by regulators, strongly supports in the C S B meeting a specific Sharia view in respect of a transaction. While he understands that the other view might also be strong and that from the regulatory perspective, the other view might be more relevant. He insists on his view because he has earlier given the same fatwa in an I F I where he is a member of SSB. Eventually, the C N B decides in line with his view. He claims in front of the respective I F I management that he got the view approved by that C S C S B and mentioned that he is happy that he is not required to change his fatwa for the I F I. This is again one of the self-serving tendencies. So we have gone through some good examples and I have skipped some of the transactions, some of the examples. Brother Musti, Fajr Nurullah has a comment referring thirty five people giving given opinion or some disclaimer to also surprises that should know. Referring thirty five, let me go to thirty five first. Uh okay, uh given opinions with some disclaimers to also surprises or he should say no for opinion on first school for research, which is not interested or lack 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 so lacks of time. Uh brother, uh Fajr Nurullah has an actually professionalism and a good process would require that he should take time. This is overconfidence. If I I I am not an expert of the business model, I'm not I'm not expert of the of the transaction. I have not read U F Fases, for example, relevant to this subject. And I simply stand up and say, oh, my opinion is this. This means that you are first having overconfidence and then secondly a fundamental attribution error you are having. So from these perspectives, I believe that he should he should put it on hold. This is the point. He should put it on hold. Or the second point is, brother, we should understand that one who knows the knows the most is the one who has the ability to say, I don't know. This is we understand. This is understood. We we know that some of the, you know, one of one of the one of the Ayma saying that I I I prefer, I don't recall exactly the 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 matter, but I think it was narrated by Imam Abu Hanifar, one of the four Aymah that that I prefer, I prefer saying hundred times, hundred times that I don't know rather than they saying something which I actually don't know and I was saying incorrectly. I don't recall exactly the wording, uh my apologies for that. But but you might have heard this thing already or read this thing already in your in your readings that one of the one of the four Aymahs, one of them actually said this thing. That I prefer saying no rather than saying something incorrect. And that is what is expected from a scholar. And this is an example where the Sharia decision maker in this aspect was an auditor or accountant because there was an accounting matter to be done in line with Sharia. And the person was not a scholar, he was an accountant and he applied his overconfidence, like you know, tendency on this matter. So with that, I will take you back to the standard. If you allow me, my preference would be that as we have already discussed about Maqasid, let's have a look at the Maqasid appendix as well because in the last public hearing, we were unable to cover these two appendices. So there is no harm if we if we can go through the Maqasid appendix. Sister Zahra, I think we talked about last time that in the sequence, Maqasid appendix should come first and then the psychological tendencies. We need to check it in the sequence of the standard itself because within the standard, we have covered what is the right approach.
Come on.
Now, this Maqasid appendix itself uh is is a huge document. Like, you know, we we could have considered bringing it as a standard, but right now we thought that because it's domain of the governance board to identify identify the right things related to this as of now and it's not a Sharia standard. Obviously, in due course, Insha Allah, we expect that Sharia standard will also be developing a proper standard on Sharia on Maqasid Sharia. So for now, we are just putting this as illustrative examples. So let's take, so if you see, this is a columnar form. So we have the Maqsad, we have illustrative dimensions, description, illustrative example and then the supporting text from the Quran and Hadith. So first is the out of the five Maqasid that we have there, Hibsuddin. So sister, I think we discussed last time also that in the final version, we need to say Hibsuddin, not Dean. And you know, it's 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 God of Dean and all that, like we have to use something proper. Now, the illustrative dimension is access to Sharia compliant goods and services. Description of the Dean of an individual through access to and consumption of Sharia compliant goods and services. Illustrative example is providing riba free riba free financial products. Supporting text, oh, you who believe do not devour each other's property by false means and let it straight conducted with you with mutual consent. Uh do not kill one another. Indeed, Allah may have, Allah has been very merciful to them. Allah destroys Reba and nourishes charities. The second one is about stakeholders' rights. Uh establishing governance mechanisms and controls to safeguard stakeholders' interests and prevent fraud, embezzlement and misuse. So Allah commands you to deliver trust to those entitled Antawudul Amanat Ilahliha. And when you and when you judge between people, judge with justice. Surely excellent is like exhortational. I guess you surely allies all hearing, all seeing. Then the same one and success is attained by those who honestly look after their trust and covenants and who you those who you who believe do not betray the trust of Allah and the messenger and do not betray your mutual trust. Uh within the Dean institution building is important. Development of religious infrastructure and going to involve Islamic institutions, social institutions and recreational institutions, the building of schools, universities and other centers of learning such as laboratories and like. Then we have, then we have the first thing uh the the Nabi Qub Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam did after Hijra was to build mosque and was place worship. So institution building and it was place of worship, leadership, education and judiciary. And then this is uh and then he built built the market after that. So we need to understand that that these are the things coming from the guidance that institution building and its importance. In then establishment, enjoying what is right and forbidding what is wrong. The establishment of I F Is is significant towards achievement of this objective in eliminating riba and other impermissible and exploitative activities and promoting trade and Sharia compliant business activities. Uh then there shall be a group of people from among who you call towards the good and bit of fair bit of fair and forbid unfair and it's it is these who are successful, give the measure and now this is very important that give the measure and faithful and do not make people short of their things. Uh the existence of Sharia governance framework including S and and SSB in an I F I is to achieve the same objectives. Then cooperating for all good deeds is required and assistance, help, support for cooperation for bad deeds is to be avoided. Uh then uh with the Avan Walal Birriwat Taqwa, Walat Avan Walal Ismailalid Man, this is one of the most fundamental uh issues from the from the Maqasid that has to be implemented. And I can tell you that based on my humble knowledge, it's not only the issue of Maqsad, it's issue of a Sharia compliance. And that is the reason that some of the U F Sharia standards have some prohibitions because of this this requirement, which at times are not addressed in the market. So for example, one of the example that I have mentioned earlier is that Sharia standard does not allow Islamic banks to use Tawarok to finance conventional banks. This is one of the examples for that. And this is like, you know, uh some of this is one of the aspects where we need to consider the the we need to consider the like, you know, the aspect of Tawon or aspect of cooperation. Uh co- uh. So in principle, I F I shall not cooperate with conventional financial institutions except in the case of dire need of or activities which are permissible. They shall prefer cooperation dealing with I F Is and the promotion of Sharia compliant transaction, the activities of other entities which are moral and Sharia and its objectives. Avoiding Hila as a source of deception. This is again one of very important aspects. So using rules and legal structure for achieving impermissible objectives and personal and worldly gains by apparently and not in real essence, creating a so-called Sharia compliant structure and documentation. And the texts are also very much warning. They try to deceive Allah and those who you those who believe while they are not deceiving anyone except themselves, although they are unaware of it. You Fajr on Allah, Walazina, uh Amen. So this is one of the very, you know, strong warnings against any trying, any effort to deceive people and to deceive na'zubillallah swt. Surely the hypocrites try to deceive Allah while he is the one who leaves him in deception. Ask them about the town situated at the tea when at the sea when they use when they used to transgress in the in the matter of Sabbath. When their fish came to them openly on the Sabbath and they did not come when they did not have Sabbath. In this way, they we put them to a test because they used to act sinfully. Uh the rewards of deeds depend on the intentions and every person will get the reward according to what he has intended. And may Allah curse the Jews for Allah made the fat of animals illegal for them and yet they melted the fat and sold it and ate its price. Oh, you, one should neither collect various portions of the property nor divide the property into various portions in order to avoid paying Saka. If anyone cuts the the lot tree, lot tree, Allah brings brings him the heading, the headlong into hell. Abu Dawud was asked about the meaning of this tradition. He said that this is a brief tradition. It means that if anyone cuts uselessly, unjustly and without any right of a lot tree under the shade of which travelers and beast take shelter, Allah will bring him into hell headlong. On the thirtieth of Saban, the freed slave of the man and messenger, he heard Rasulullah, he said, he said, the messenger of Allah, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam say, whoever kills young or old or burns date palms or cut down a fruit bearing tree or slaughters a sheep for its skin does not return with reward. Sisters Zahra, about last two, last two supporting texts, just discuss with me some comments of the working group, I think. Just keep it in mind. I we need to discuss something about placements. Okay, brother Fahim Hussain has commented, I have to leave now, but I would like to share the following three suggestions. The first two are journal and third is specific. One, the standard should be proofed by a native English speaker. Thank you very much. Uh it will be done. It's not necessary that a native English speaker is there, but we have a proofreading mechanism. Inshallah it will be done. Number two, standardized transliteration system should be used. Actually, at U F we use a standardized, our own transliteration system. We have standardized it for ourselves. Uh we do not follow another standardized transliteration system followed by some universities etcetera. But we have our own like, you know, standardized transliteration set. Under Para eighty one format for presenting queries to SSB, I suggest adding another point. If the Sharia compliance department's input comments on the query. Thank you very much, sir. We take your note, Insha Allah, recommend and Insha Allah, we'll try to consider it. Thank you very much again, brother Fahim, for being with us. Thank you very much. Uh Sisters Zahra, brother Fahim himself actually works as translator and Sharia auditor in South Africa. So we may need to like, you know, keep him in contact for getting his input on the standards and review. Thank you very much, brother Fahim, and and thank you very much for joining in. Doctor Yusuf Shanar has another point. There is a difference between the legitimate trick and the trick that must be differentiated between them. Al Shaktiti says the trick is more accurate word than the director. There is a difference between uh then, okay, it's a repeated comment. Uh Doctor Yusuf, sir, your comment is well noted. Uh I think that we do not want to go into this argument. I will try to incorporate your comments somewhere in a way that that if the trick or he uses or Hila is used in the positive direction, it can be allowed. I think it is understood, but we'll try to incorporate your point. Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Now coming to the life part. Now we are talking about, you know, if this is this is safeguarding the life. So right of information is there, ensuring the provision of relevant information to consumer about product or service so that he can make informed decision. Uh then we have the right freedom of association achieving Sharia compliant objectives. Uh I I'm not going for all the details of some of the, again, I won't say less important ones, but the point is that they do not need a discussion. Uh then we have avoiding self-inflecting of harm. This is very important. Eliminating anything that will harm humans, for example, protection of our armed goods and services, tobacco, arms and ammunition. So do not put yourself into 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 destruction. Uh and right to, so this is like, you know, basis for prohibition of law, any activity that is uh that is there. Sister Zahra, just make a note of it. Actually, for sustainable finance, we have created, used, use this one also. So I think we may create some reference or maybe we may create something what we have written in the top standard there to bring here to ensure consistency. Just make a note for internal purposes.
For cross referencing, okay.
I think cross reference will not be needed. I think we added something there. We just because because it's not only about haram goods and service tobacco and arms, but also about anything that harms the society. So from that perspective, I think we need to add it. So it's not a cross reference either. I think we we wrote something there which needs to be added here.
Yeah.
Okay, right to earn for self independence, right and responsibility both doing trade and providing services in line with Sharia. Uh I think just you need sister, you just need to check double spacing here and before providing and left I'll need to check if it is left aligned or not. Provision for quality education. I F I shall consider playing their role in the provision of quality education in their respective jurisdiction through different means, including commercial financing as well as social support aspects. Promoting research and development of technical advancements. Uh I F I shall consider playing their role in the promotion of research and development and technological advancement in their respective jurisdictions through different means, including commercial financing as well as social aspects. Raising awareness, making all stakeholders, customers, employees and organs of governance aware of the key difference between Islamic in terms of banking, finance and the advantages of the former. Uh no comma after finance, sister, please make a note of it. Asking the people who are are knowledgeable. Establishing SSBs and appointing experts and consultants who advise on Sharia related matters as well as other matters of significance. SSB shall also consult with the experts. Wassalu Ahlazikra. So you need to ask the people who actually understand the things. Protecting orphans. Now we are on the progeny side. Sorry, the earlier ones were on the intellect side. So there was Dean, life, intellect. Now we are moving these these points about knowledge and research and development were related to intellect. Now we move to progeny and and this is establish and provide financial support to orphanages etcetera. Then we have natural resources, not harming the environment in any way as a first step and improving that plant increase, preventing deforestation, keeping oceans clean and so on was the second step. Uh protecting natural resources, I F I particularly those working in agriculture, macro finance sectors need to play their role, taking into consideration both the commercial avenues and social aspects. I F I shall promote a decent culture in internal work environment and shall avoid supporting and financing an institution even on initiative which does not conform to these values. So this is right to decency etcetera, multiplicity of offspring, fulfillment of basic needs. And now here we start with the wealth. Now, wealth related points might be most important, so I'll try to like discuss them more more detail. Fulfillment of basic needs. Eliminating all forms of poverty shall be amongst the objective of I F I. These shall be specific social finance institutions serving primarily for primarily for those objectives. Sister four is missing here.
Four is missing, yes.
Yeah. If anyone relieves a Muslim believer from one of the hardships of his worldly life, Allah will relieve him one of the hardships of the day of resurrection. If anyone makes it easy for the one who is indebted to him while finding it difficult to repay, uh Allah will make it easy for him in this worldly life and in the hereafter. And if anyone conceals the fault for Muslim, Allah will conceal his faults in this world and in the hereafter. Allah helps his slaves as long as he helps his brother. Uh right, righteousness is not merely that you turn your faces to the east and west, but what righteousness is that that one believes in Allah and the last day and the angels and the book and the prophets and gives wealth despite his love for it to relatives and and orphans, the helpless, the wayfarer and those who ask and spend in freeing the slaves and observe the Sala prayers and praise Saka. Promote real economy, encouraging the manufacturing and trading sectors. Uh I think sister, I think we should add here even the agriculture and other sectors, like any all the real sector, real sectors of economy. I think we should use the term real sectors of economy, including manufacturing, trading and agri and others. I think we should use the term real sectors of economy, including manufacturing, trading and agri and others. The Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam was asked what type of earning is best. He applied a man's work with his hand in every transaction which is free from cheating or deception. Uh the final outcome, if the final hour comes while you have a shoot of, a shoot of plant in your hand and it's possible to plant it before the hour comes, you should plant it. Eliminate excessive debt, discourage consumerism as if it is results in excessive debt. Any debt-based financing which is not correlated with the one-to-one economic activity should not be and actively promoted. Encourage as far as possible equity risk and reward sharing uh and reward sharing uh. I think it's continued. Reward sharing financing. Moreover, it is also preferable to discourage deficit financing for the governance. Similarly, IFI should avoid using debt-based, uh debt-based products, for example, the varu for obtaining financing, deposit equalities and put preference on investment, investment-based modes. Space before investment uh after before uh between investment and base system, please make a note of it. Uh now, this is very important, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam would not pray for a man who owed a debt. A deceased person was brought to him and he said, does he owe any debt? They said, yes, he owes the two dinars. He said, pray for your brother, for your companion. Abu Khadha said, I will pay them, O messenger of Allah, so he prayed for him. So the point is that we need to understand that Islam does not encourage uh excessive debt or the credit bubbles that we talk about. And uh that is the reason that excessive consumerism, if it results in excessive debt, should this should not be promoted by Islamic finance. Just pricing, uh so eliminate profiteering as maximum as possible and none withholds good till the price rises but a thinner. And uh ju- uh and go to the curtailers who when measure something, we receive from paper ticket in full and when they measure or pay something to uh to give it to the then give less than due. So provide just and sustainable returns to all stakeholders. Just sharing, just allocation of remuneration between and within the executive management and non-executive staff and just allocation profits against different stakeholders. Just allocation of assets according to the quality and return on stakeholder. None of you will have faith until he wishes for his Muslim brother what he likes for himself. Equitable distribution of wealth wise zakah and sadakah, dis- dis- disbursement of zakah and sadakah to their rightful recipients in in the society as prescribed by Sharia. And be steadfast in salah and pay zakah and go down with those who owe down. Ban on hoarding of wealth. Hoarding of wealth unnecessarily is prohibited and is in circulation of wealth is encouraged, is and is encouraged. Those who withhold in mis- mis- miserliness what Allah has given them out, his grace should not be taken as good for them. Instead, it is bad for them. They shall be forced uh on the doom's day to put on what they withheld as in in iron collars and around with, sorry. As iron collars round their necks. Allah belongs, the inheritance of the heavens and the earth, Allah is all aware of what you do. Whenever fi'a Allah has passed on to his messenger from the people of the towns is for Allah and for the messenger and for the for the kinsmen and the orphans and the needy and the warfarers so that it may, it may not circulate between the rich among you. So lika ilatukunu doh- doh- duletum bain- uh bainu lakniya minkum. That is one of the most important uh prohibitions about hoarding of wealth and like, you know, accumulation of wealth without without means. I think I can, I I can see some of the questions, but let me quickly close this one and then take the questions. So sustaining and utilizing resources wisely. The existence of IFIs in the broader picture of Islamic economic system includes the responsibility to play their due part in just and equitable resource utilization among sectors of society, which in turn would help in eradication of poverty. Eradication of poverty. So there is no creature on earth whose sustenance is not undertaken by Allah. He knows it permanent and it has separate place, everything is a clear book. Uh then sustaining and utilizing, this is continuing, there shall also be Islamic social finance institutions having this as primary objective. Adopting moderation and encourage the use of resources, including one's wealth moderately. One who believe would um do not hold as unlawful the good things that Allah has made lawful for you, will to and do not transgress. Verily, Allah does not like the transgress- transgressors. Surely, trans- squanders, squanderers are brothers of Satan and the Satan is very ungrateful to his law. Adopting moderation, oh children of Adam, take on adornment of to at every mosque, eat and drink and do not extremitent. Surely, he does not like the extremitent. Condemnation of mon- uh monetism and materialism. Adoption of a balanced way of life is encouraged, pursuit of world for worldly benefits is encouraged and so far as the same does not contradict with the preparation for the life hereafter. Who owe you, who you believe, do not hold as unlawful the good things that Allah has made lawful for you and do not transgress. Verily, Allah does not like the transgressors. Condemnition uh adoption of balanced way of life, I think, uh the next one uh is continuing and seek the betterment of the ultimate abode with what Allah has given to you. And do not neglect your share from this world and do as, do good as Allah did good to you and do not seek to make mischief in the land. Surely Allah does not like the mischief makers. Equity is promoted, encourage policies that promote justice rather than equality. It is, it is they, it is they who allocate the mercy of your Lord. They have allocated them with them with their livelihood in the worldly life and have raised some of them over others in right so that some of them, so that some of them may put uh some others to work and the mercy of your Lord is much better than what they accumulate. Prohibition of bribery, at no cost bribery or unjust achievement of a person at the expense of another is tolerated. Do not eat up, eat up each other's property by false means nor approach when it comes, when it uh approach with it the authorities to eat a proportion of the property of the people sinfully while you know that they aren't just in doing so. Abdullah Ibn Abner narrated, the messenger of Allah cursed the one who bribes and the one who takes a bribe. Prohibition of trade of alcohol and gambling. Muslims are forbidden to deal with trade of alcohol and making money from gambling. IFI shall avoid, IFI sister, there should not be apostrophe here. IFI shall avoid having any transaction investment in prohibited business trade. Prohibition of theft and robbery. Theft and robbery of people's property are impermissible and and punishable. Yusuf processing somebody's else's property by force etc. shall be avoided by IFIs in all situations. This, this is important, that do not eat up, eat up each other's property by false means nor approach it with authorities to eat up with a portion of property. This is, we have repeated because this actually, uh some of the aspects of Islamic finance are about just and equitable, you like, you know, allocation of resources to their stakeholders and their profits. And it is very important here. I think we have some questions, just allow me two more minutes. Strong discouragement of begging, policies to eliminate begging to be made and promote employment. Sister, again, there is multiple spacing here. There should be Islamic social finance initiative by IFIs for this purpose. Prohibition of wrong measuring and weighing. Institutions such as Hisba are encouraged to establish to eliminate my practices in business. IFI shall ensure proper allocation for profits etc. Actually, to me, sister, just if you can add it, that uh wrong measuring and weighing, it is, it is very, it has very important notion to the appropriate accounting as well. So just make it, make it this one, that uh we need to add it about accounting here.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm really sorry, I've taken too much time on this one, but I wanted to cover it briefly. Uh so I have a long list of questions. So number one is from Abdul Hadi Hussain about clause sixty-nine. Okay, let, I'll go back to, I'll, I'll go back to the sixty-nine shortly, so I'll take this question later. Brother Mohammed Wali, is the exposure draft of Aofi standard on sustainable finance available yet? No, brother, unfortunately, we are in the process. The work is in advanced stage, but it will take like, you know, a couple of months because governance board is busy on a few things. So we have to take them on a priority basis. So the, our apologies, but it will be a bit late. Brother Asadullah Shahab, thank you very much. This explanatory series is very useful. My request is that again, language for teaching and writing should be made easy to understand and more so that everyone can use it. Uh we try to use simple language except for, you know, the supporting text is coming in very difficult language at times. It makes me difficult to read because it's coming from some of the approved translation sources. So we are not doing the translation ourselves on supporting text, but other than that, we'll try to make a language review for the, for making it easy to understand. Thank you very much, brother Asadullah Shahab. Okay, brother Faisal Azim has a comment, Maqasid wealth are referring living wage in point eighteen and nineteen. So point eighteen and nineteen, let me see quickly. Okay, uh brother Faisal Azim, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not clear on this one, uh referring le- uh living wage. So can you kindly explain your point a bit better? Honestly, I, it's, I'm, I'm unable to understand the full point. Okay, sorry, you have mentioned again. From point twenty-two B to B twenty-six, we are discussing examples of rent seeking. Brother Faisal Azim, would it be possible for you kindly that uh you can, you can write it properly like it as a full, full, a full comment so that I can try to understand your point better? So my apologies, but unfortunately, these pointers are not enough for me to understand your point. Brother Mohammed Uwaz, a point at number twenty-one should avoid instead of eliminate, uh twenty-one. Uh okay, brother Mohammed Uwaz, we are saying, not saying eliminate, uh eliminate debt. We are saying eliminate excessive debt. Now, avoid excessive debt might make it very, very, uh like, you know, very uh loose. So again, your comment is well taken. If you were taking, taking about uh avoiding, avoiding debt culture, I would say eliminate would not be good, avoiding would be good. But when we are using the term excessive, then probably a stronger word than avoid, avoid might be needed. But again, uh your, your point is well taken, we'll take it to the working group and we'll see how the board, working group and board feel. If they are uh okay with excessive or they want to use the term avoid. Thank you very much, sir. Comment from brother Muhammad Azim Abdullah. My comment that appendixy key aspects of Maqaddus Sharia relevant to Azim in the context of where we should also mention practical examples for practically applying Maqasid Sharia in the process of Sharia decision as mentioned in the psychological tendencies. That this appendixy is only giving general aspects related to Maqasid, however, its governance standard is related to Sharia decision making. It must also give the practical examples how to implement Maqasid in the Sharia ruling. Uh brother Azim Abdullah, thank you very much, it's a good comment, let me just see. Uh we'll take it to the board and working group and we'll see if they want to enhance it from this angle. I think the purpose of this appendix was not to go in that much detail while uh psychological tendencies was one of the main subject of this one. Uh we expect and that in future we will be coming up with a Sharia standard on this area that might be covering other aspects. But uh I, I'm unable to answer this comment right now, it's a good comment. We will just see if the working group and the board want to go in more, more, more of this or just want to enhance on the illustrative examples. So we'll see and we'll uh we'll, we'll try to incorporate your comment as far as practicable, brother. Uh brother Faisal Azim has a very good comment in point thirty-two, production of methanol and ethanol for energy storage and generation allowed. Uh the point, I, you know, uh this is a good point. Uh the, so the question is, uh the question is, for me, I'm clear that commercial use of, commercial use of methanol and ethanol. Me- me- again, methanol is not a problem at all. Methanol uh cannot be, you cannot drink methanol. And you know, even the risk of blindness is there, so methanol is never a risk. The risk is only ethanol. Ethanol is uh is for both purposes, for consumption also, but not in the, when, when you develop ethanol in the commercial, uh commercial percentage, that is up to even ninety percent plus concentration or eighty-five percent plus concentration, nobody can drink it actually. But the point is important. So I think that where we have mentioned about alcohol, we should talk about consumable alcohol or drinkable alcohol. Uh I think we should, uh but the point is well taken. Sister, uh sister Zahra, I think we should just take a note of it that where we have talked about alcohol, we should talk about drinkable or consumable alcohol, okay? Because the commercial and uh fuel, fuel and uh and you know, thinner and other uses of alcohol, uh ethanol, uh spirit for the purpose of like, you know, the medical uses, all these like, you know, are acceptable. So the point is that we should be like, you know, not in keeping it general, general meaning which impacts like, you know, decision making. Rather, we say consumable alcohol or drinkable alcohol or something like this, okay? Thank you very much, brother Faisal Azim, for very good point. Your other comments honestly about twenty-two, twenty-four, this, these points were, I was not very clear on this one, like, you know, because your comments are very short and brief. So and uh at times they are not very clear about it. So like you are talking about twenty-two to twenty-six, we are discussing examples of rent seeking. Now, it's not actually rent seeking that we are talking, so please, if you can have your questions uh explained a bit better and more detail, like, you know. Uh with that, sister, till what time we have, we have nearly one hour left, may I right, am I right?
Brother, two thirty.
Two thirty, and people are running away now, it's a already a long session.
Yes.
Shall we ask people, they want to continue till uh till, because last time we covered uh most of part of the standard except for the, for this one. What I suggest, we try to, to culminate now in fifteen to twenty minutes. Because I can see that roughly, uh yeah, some people did not join after the break and some other people have left because it is a very long public hearing, it's a very long standard. So maybe we can, we can try to like, you know, uh to wind up in fifteen, twenty minutes and don't try to take full, full hour. Uh because I maybe uh this way we will be asking others to leave as well. And those who are here, thanks for uh them to be consistent, you know, it's a long standard, so many, uh so many discussion points, so many uh issues. Uh and at times maybe, uh you just see one person on your, on your screen with this uh this continuing presentation, so you might start getting bored. So for all of you who are still there, thanks a lot. And we expect that nobody is sleeping and they are actually uh willing to contribute more by their points. Okay, so psychological tendencies part was done, let me just move, move to that product development process. Uh we are trying to streamline the product development process here. So we are like, not going to like, you know, I'm not going to repeat all of whatever is written and we have suggested appendix of a product, a product development process as well. So actually, I should have, I should have taken you there uh early uh before that, so let me quickly go there. Okay. So this, this is also in the appendix, so for a new product. So number one, generally speaking, product development follows the below mentioned illustrative steps. Number one, need identification, so there has to be appropriate need identification with input from all experts. Then, once the need is identified, the product need to be identified and its suitability need to be assessed. Uh the above, uh and then uh further research etc. might be needed for proper share compliant uh approach. Then Sharia viability is needed for this, that what is the viability of this from Sharia perspective? Sister Zahra, just a note, these definite, if we are putting the headings, then headings don't come with the, this numbering style need to be corrected in Aofi's established writing style. Okay, just make a note, but I think this will not be A, B, C when we converted it to appendix, this all shall become paragraph numbers. So just, just, I think when, because it was converted at the last moment after discussions, so we did not see the numbering scheme. So if, if, if the headings are in between, then it will not be appearing in semicolons and column, rather it will be appearing in proper, proper paragraphs, okay? Okay, just discuss it with me separately to ensure consistency. Then Sharia viability and the business viability, you need to consider the things from the business viability perspective. Then we have a legal viability, so we need to have the vetting from the legal perspective. Then we uh need to have a pro research or product paper that should summarize all of the product structure related details and everything. And format of obtaining Sharia board approval for the different products should include the uh the minimum following requirements, the background of the product and the need, product design, uh related requirements, including, you know, including the type of product, nature of product and line Sharia contract, step-by-step product, graphical process flow. Nature of product and line Sharia contract, step-by-step product, graphical process flow, financial structure. And transaction recording and reporting for accounting purposes, I T mapping, legal and compliance consideration, Sharia compliance controls. And brief of related documentation. And then rationale and basis of conclusion should be there for this. So this whole paper should be providing this whole detail to the Sharia board for getting the approval. The product development process flow has to include this thing like, you know, as a suggested, as a suggested diagram. That idea generation and acceptance starts with idea generation, idea screening, concept paper, S S P approval on the concept paper. Business case and authorization, then converting concept to products, the product design, sign of documentation and manuals and S O Ps. S S B approval of all of it, develop the I T system or adjust I T system, marketing materials, regulatory approval. In-house testing, personal training, pilot run, S S B approval at this stage as the final approval. Full scale launch, post-launch review and internal Sharia audit. So this, these are the steps that we have suggested to be included here. There is a comment now I can see from brother Ahmad Abdullah. It is a working day, many of us are in the offices. I would suggest to break the public hearing of long draft in few days and short sessions, maybe one to two hours each. I think of a better format of presenting the drafts. Thank you very much, brother Ahmad Abdullah. Normally we are trying to keep each public hearing, one and a half to two hours, maximum two and a half hours. Last time I think it was two and a half or three hours, which was not sufficient. So we thought that we should do an experiment like this, but we agree and we understand that, that. So we can, we can consider holding public hearings according to sections or something for the longer standards. Very, very rightly suggested and while we are trying to keep the public hearing shorter. But this time it was a, it was a experiment and I think that this experiment is not very good in the meaning. That initially there were one forty-five to one fifty people and now there are eighty people. And we don't blame anybody leaving because as you mentioned, they are in offices and it's quite long. It's nearly with two-third of the day that is being covered here. So thank you very much and fully agreed and appreciated. Okay, so now we go back and I'll just try to like wrap up as I mentioned. And actually this is good that in these two public hearings, we covered most, covered most of the standard already. Because, because last time we covered most of the body tax, but we could not cover the, we could not cover the. Uh, eh, eh, sorry, just let me, I'm trying to find the place where I was. So we could not cover this, uh, this, these appendices. Now this time we are able to, to cover the appendices. Next is about. The roles and responsibilities of various organs of governance. So we have put the responsibilities of the Sharia supervisory board, which include the normal process as well as avoidance of the, of the psychological tendencies. And then we have put, again, this, this is like, you know, this is about what they need to do. To manage the risk of these tendencies. There is one specific section with regard to limited delegation of authority. Uh because that is also very important part of Sharia decision making, that at time the S S B delegates some of the functions. In case of limited delegation of authority by the S S B normally to one of its members in line with the relevant O F I G S S and the regulatory framework. The delegated officers who are interested shall, delegated sister Zahra, I think it should not be officer, delegated person. Because, because after discussion it was added that normally one to, one of its members will be only the delegated. It will not be a Sharia compliance department member. So officer needs to be replaced with the person. So they should have knowledge of and should keep in the prospective, respective hierarchy of Sharia principles and rules as prescribed by O F I. Be obligated to give a response answer in line terms of reference of this specific delegation of authority by the S S B. Be free of any conflict of interest with the business and operational functions of the I F I. The Sharia decision by the delegated officer must be ratified by the next S S B meeting or by circulation or in line with the relevant terms of reference. Now, the next section is about minimum contents of fatwa. Now, this is a very important part that we are seeing that fatwa must have product, structure, documentation of the underlying contract, original query or observation. The Sharia ruling, controls for potential major pervasive Sharia non-compliance risk and Sharia basis for issued fatwa. Reservations and dissenting opinions, if any, along with the reason for such reservation and dissent on the name of the signature of the spectrum numbers. Dissenting opinion is not to be made available in case of publishing a fatwa to the general public only if so required. Is to be made available to the public only if so required by the respective regulator. Otherwise, we are not requiring it. Sisters Zahra, also the term regulator, now we are using the uniform term R S A. So we should be like, you know, defining and we should be using R S A, okay? Obviously, first place where we have used, we need to say regulatory and supervisory authority and then we'll put in bracket R S A. And every other place we'll use R S A. Yes, keep a note of it. Signature of all concerning members of the S S B a date of issuance of the fatwa. All, it is also preferred where applicable that a fatwa shall provide guidance in respect of the timing of conditions of recognition of relevant revenues, assets and liabilities. The S S B may delegate some tasks to delegated officer in the S C D. The sister, this, this S C D function delegation should be referred to, subject to conditions of the above paragraphs, okay?
Okay.
Okay, S C D has its own functioning which I'm not going to discuss in detail. I'll try to quickly cover this section. Um but there is one important point mechanism for revisiting a previous fatwa. This is one of the areas where we received the comments that is called, that Sharia standard twenty-nine also covers this part. I think we can, we, we have just tried to add on, on the things rather than to replicate the things. But I think that some important requirements are here. So it is the responsibility of the C. Uh so C D for performing, to have in place a mechanism for review of a previous fatwa and duly approved by the S S B. This is to verify that, verify whether the conditions and basis on which the fatwa was previously issued still exists. If necessary, the S C Ds are recommend the S T B, S S B revisit such fatwa based on its findings. So then we have some minimum requirements when, if, when it becomes necessary, for example, when the new regulations are imposed or if it is. Uh if, if like a new Sharia standard comes in, new central Sharia rulings comes in. So these are the things where actually Sharia compliance department has to update the Sharia board. That these are the changes in the requirements and you might need to reconsider your fatwa. If a newly formed S S B attempts to change a previous fatwa, the S S B should consider taking the views of the former S S B members. That is similar to the requirement we discussed earlier, format for presenting queries to the S S B. The format should include the following minimum requirements, query owner, nature of the query, type of query and sub-theme under which the query is there. Background and purpose of the query and necessary details. The query owner should provide complete and correct information to the S S B. Enabling them to make an objective decision. Research on Sharia issues, the C D shall also be doing some research and analysis for that. Uh the management has the responsibility with regard to the providing, providing complete, accurate and objective information. And eventually with regard to the implementation. And one important point, the management shall not insist that the S S B approve a product service because it was already approved by other sponsors or peers or positive school or thought of competitor. This is a very specific requirement and they should avoid the practice of non-disciplined fatwa. So we have put some requirements specifically on the management here in order to comply with the requirements of the standard. Then we have talked about reporting mechanism, training and culture. So this section talks about the implementation and reporting, reporting mechanism of the Sharia decision making mechanism. And then training and culture needs to be there, including the training for the psychological tendencies for the management, for the staff and for the. Uh product development and then the C D department as well as the Sharia board. The standard was originally planned to be effective for January twenty twenty-four. We would like to have your comments on that. But we, I personally believe that it, because it's a long standard and the public hearings, translation, everything is taking time. So maybe the date needs to be extended to twenty twenty-five. You can provide comments now or you can provide comments in writing later. So maybe it can have twenty-five or twenty-six. So with that, I have tried to wrap up a bit quickly towards the end. Particularly because most of these sections were discussed in the last public hearing as well. And before everybody runs away, I need to close it. So again, my, our apologies for keeping all of you in, in this long public hearing. And thanks for all of you who are already there for nearly four hours. Thanks for all of you. You know, it's all being here, providing your comments is a sadqay jarriya for this noble task, which will be like, you know, your comments. And all this input is important and we hope that this standard can bring some improvement to the market, Insha Allah, once it is fine. Like, so if we have any other questions, please quickly let me know. Otherwise, we can like, you know, conclude. Uh sorry, brother Abdul Hadi Hussain, you had one question about clause twenty-nine, how to rephrase the clause. Clearly mentioned that the delegation can be allowed to serve S E member or any Sharia officer who has required qualification. I think, I think, I, I, we, we note your points, sir, and we need to align the two paragraphs later as well as I mentioned. Sisters Zahra, please make a note of it from, the comment from brother Abdul Hadi Hussain is very important. I remember that working group and board made two, three time changes to the delegation thing. And that is the reason, and even the Sharia committee made some changes. So that is the reason that we may need to align what is the final wording. Because Sharia committees change, the working group and board change, all need to be aligned together in line with the comment of brother Abdul Hadi Hussain. Brother Abdul Hadi, about the Sharia committee wanted delegation only to one of the Sharia board members. Like in UAE, they have an executive member or executive committee of Sharia board. In some countries, they have executive committee of Sharia board. In some countries, like Pakistan, they have resident Sharia board member. So the idea is that this delegation should mainly be done only to a Sharia board member and not to a Sharia officer. And that we need to align based on the final comments of the Sharia committee. So Insha Allah, we'll try to incorporate your comment along with others as well. Uh there is comment from brother Fahim Rasa, great session, happy to help and support. Thank you very much, brother, for being with us. Uh Allah bless you for being here. So you are most welcome, brother Abdul Hadi Hussain, for your thanks. Uh brother Faisal Azim, can I request, if you can kindly send your comments to us like, you know, in writing. Or if you can just write it, write them down here more clear. Because some of your comments are like, you know, bullet points and we could not understand them very clearly. With that, I do not have any further comments here. Okay, brother Faisal Azim has mentioned kindly show your email. Okay, first thing is, Sister Zahra, Sister Alia put the. Anybody who wants to provide comments, they can provide comments at governance@iof.com. Anybody who wants to approach me, you can approach me at oansari@iof.com. Uh you can, Sister Zahra and Sister Alia, can you just put both of these email addresses? Uh the email address for comments, that is governance@iof.com and my personal email address, that is oansari@iof.com. Uh for the benefit of all the audience here in the chat window. So brother Faisal Azim, you will find it in chat window in couple of minutes now. Uh I think sisters will put it now. Uh Sister Rajna Anapur has a comment, okay, she just wanted to thank, she's saying Jazakallah Khair and thank you very much, sister, for being with us. Uh and this time you have been, you have been a bit quiet. So only one or two comments. So looking forward towards your more comments, maybe you can send some comments in writing as well. Sisters Zahra, are you putting your, Sister Zahra or Alia, are you putting comment, my, my email address and governance email address in the chat window? Please quickly before you conclude. Okay, with that, I, I would like to conclude and thank you all and hand it over back to Sister Zahra.
Thank you.
Sister Alia has already put the email addresses. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alia. Thank you, brother Ahmad. Thank you for all the participants, for our partners. If you still have more comments, please share with us on I O P, on governance@iof.com. And check our website and social media platform for the details about the upcoming public hearings. Thank you so much for your time. Jazakumullah Khair and fi'a manillah.